Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the February 17th, 2022 Lexington City Council to order. Thank you all for being here and look forward to your participation. First item of business, if you all will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all very much. Again, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the journalism class of Dr. Cummings and look forward to answering any questions or filling in any blanks, but glad you're here and participating in the work of the City of Lexington. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any additions or changes, and unless there's an objection, we will approve it as presented. Very good. We'll move directly into presentations. Derek Almerod with the Rockbridge Regional Jail is running behind, so we will defer him for the moment. And let's call on Fred Dudley, the Director for the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Mr. Dudley, if you can state your name and address for the record, and please press the button there to make it red. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Fred Dudley, 65, Buffalo View Drive, Lexington. So I do apologize in advance. I wasn't running landfills quite time-consuming, and as I was just explaining to Mr. Smith earlier, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare for this. So I was asked to do just a brief summary of current activities at the landfill, and I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with the landfill, but I thought I would actually start out with just a brief summary of our overview of the landfill from its inception to the present day. The landfill began accepting waste in 1972, and in 2017, the county of Rockbridge and the city of Lexington formed the Blue Ridge Resource Authority, which we are currently. The landfill consists of the original Phase 1 cell and cells 1 through 4. Cell 1 has nearly reached capacity, and Cell 2 is currently under construction. Cells 3 and 4 will be constructed in the future. Phase 1 is an unlined cell and covers an area of 34 acres, and I see unlined, it has a natural clay liner consisting of roughly 300 feet of natural clay. It reached its permitted capacity in February of 2018, and it was certified closed by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality in May of 2021. Cells 1 through 4 were permitted in 2016. Construction of Cell 1 was completed in the spring of 2017 and began receiving waste in the early fall of that year. Current and future cells are designed with an engineered liner system which protects our groundwater from potential contamination by capturing the leachate, which is the water that runs through the waste. The leachate then flows into a line basin where it's pumped and hauled to the Maury Services, Maury Services, Service Authority's wastewater treatment plant. We currently have eight full-time and three part-time employees. We also have a man collection center located on our site, and it's open Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And our landfill hours are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon. Now, for just a quick summary of our big-ticket item right now is the construction of Cell Cell 2 construction began in June of last year, 2021, and should be completed sometime next week. They're in the final stages of construction. I think they had, one of their issues, recent issues, was their long-reach excavator that they're using to clean out our sediment basin, which is one of the last things that they were tasked with, actually broke down. So they were hoping to finish up before the impending weather tonight, and that's not going to happen. So I would say it's going to be middle of next week to latter part of next week before they have completed it. During the closure process of Phase 1, waste was discovered outside of the permitted boundary on the southern end, which is where Cells 1 through 3 are piggybacking onto. This discovery affected the permitted bottom grades and final grades of Cells 2 through 4. Because of this, the authority was required to apply for a permit amendment to reflect the grade changes. This was applied for last spring, and the draft was finally received on February 11th. There will be a 30-day public, there will be a 30-day public comment period which starts on March 1st. After this, the permit will be issued, and we will also receive, hopefully, our certificate to operate Cell 2. We will, at that point in the game, we will start diverting household bagged waste into Cell 2 to create a fluff layer, which with a new cell, you typically start with a fluff layer to basically leave out all the rough construction demolition debris, industrial, commercial waste, that sort of thing that could potentially damage the liner. So with the bagged household waste, it provides a clean fluff layer that will protect the layer in the future from punctures. Once we, once we have a fluff layer over, established over part of the new cell, Cell 2, then we'll begin adding in, diverting all the waste into Cell 2. Currently, or as we begin to build our fluff layer in Cell 1, or Cell 2, rather, we're planning to, depending on how quickly we get our certificate to operate, we, as we divert household bag waste to Cell 2, we still have to landfill all the construction, demolition debris, and commercial industrial waste that comes in. That will continue to go into the remaining areas of Cell 1. So the quicker we get into Cell 2, the quicker we can start diverting that, diverting that bagged household waste. As I said, we continue to place all other waste in Cell 1 until inadequate fluff layers in place in a portion of Cell 2. Cell 1, Cell 2 covers an area of seven acres and is estimated to last roughly nine years. The lifespan of Cells 1 through 4 is estimated to be roughly 45 years, and that fluctuates depending on your average tonnage per day, which currently it's fluctuating between 143 and 150 tons per day. This is the time of year when it drops off, cold weather. That's pretty much all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to make an attempt to-
Thank you, Fred. Members of council, have any questions or want to continue the conversation of Talking Hearing none. Fred, thank you for being with us, and thank you for your good work at the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. You may be stopped by students to be interrogated to find out more about the cells as you depart, but we're glad you're here, and thank you for your work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Spy Derek Almerod sneaking in the back, so we'll call on him. And Derek, thank you for being with us this evening and bring us a report from the Rockbridge Regional Jail. And if you could, state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Derek Almerod, 2549 Old Greenville Road, Stanton, Virginia. Good evening, members of council, mayor, Mr. House. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Our current status of Rockbridge Regional Jail, we were a facility built in 1987. We're currently 35 years old as of this year. Our rated capacity when we were built was for 56 beds. Our operational capacity this afternoon, as our numbers do fluctuate, it's always a variable, but our current assigned to custody inmates are 142, leaving us 252% over capacity. Our daily average in-house inmate population is 115. Our operational tracking, which is a potential capacity, we track the numbers inbound in the court system. Those total 96, so I track about 241 offenders daily. Out of 112 inmates housed in our current facility, we have about 48 inmates assigned in programming. This is a work or educational type of program. Our entire population are afforded an educational program through their tablet educational learning system, which is indigent-based, so they do not pay for that. That's something that we offer to them regardless of their ability to pay. Work release, we have five currently. Trustee work program, which you guys may see in your municipality and inside the cities, those are seven inmates working there. We have workforce. We participate with the Virginia Department of Transportation. We have a workforce contract with them. We have three crews totaling three inmates each and an officer, so there's nine inmates signed to that. We have one jail cadre, which a cadre is basically an inmate who's assigned permanently through their work and efforts and their educational development and work development. They're assigned permanently to the facility. They do not go into DOC, but they actually work in the facility every day. We have one of those. We have six trustees assigned, both our female trustees and our male trustees. Reentry, we have six assigned to our new reentry program that we established last year through a federal grant, which I'll speak about in just a second. And we have 14 assigned to substance abuse educational programming. So that's a new program that's also part of our reentry development program, and so we're pretty excited about that number, actually. Intake and release fees, an average of five to six admissions and/or releases per day, every day of the year. So to be as small as we are, we're extremely busy. Current reciditive rates, this will probably set you back on your chair a second, but it's 83.04%. Males, 84.09%, and females, 79.17%. Several years ago, we entered into a RISP program. Basically, it was a subcommittee of the jail commission to look at the alternatives to incarceration and things that we could address either prior to incarceration or things that we could do following incarceration to attack, well, obviously to mitigate the challenges that come with either an expansion or a new correctional facility study where we have to look at additional bed space. Out of that RISP committee, that subcommittee that was chaired by Mr. Hoskins, and I participated in along with all the other police departments in municipalities, probation and parole, the court systems, the Commonwealth attorneys, everyone participated in that for a little bit over around 15 months. The thing that really struck us when we came out of that was our recidative behavior. And so we have, in the last two years, truly made a concerted effort to attack that and look at programming and how we can impact that in a positive way. And the jail commission and the communities, both to include the City of Lexington, have been very supportive of that. We have in place through great effort and our partnership, a $550,000 reentry grant that is shared with our regional facility as well as Allegheny and that regional area across the mountain to the west of us. Our current operating budget is about $5,500,000. Our cost per day in our 2020 data coming out of the jail cost report, which is published through the Commonwealth of Virginia, the compensation board, our current cost per day is $96.26 per inmate per day. So our operational average is about $13,000 a day to operate the jail. The jail has received two operational grants totaling over 100, just under $100,000, actually, in the last 18 months, and these were, these are federal and state grants directed at COVID-19 and the prevention of that, as well as how we manage through that crisis. The jail has an active request for proposal now on its website for a community corrections plan and either an expansion or build proposal. So that is active. It just went active within the last 30 days. So we are very, very busy, and we are basically a community within a community, and we certainly appreciate all your support throughout my tenure here in the last five years. And so I look forward to, this is a fast and furious snapshot of today's operation and what's going on in the regional jail, but I thought I would afford you the opportunity to ask specific questions of me. Maybe I can address some things or concerns that you may have, or just simply answer some questions about the regional jail. I'd love to take that time this evening to do that. So that's my quick report, and so, questions?
Derek, a first question. First, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
All of the work that you presented to us this evening that's being accomplished, how many employees, you may have stated, but how many employees are you operating with right now?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five security staff. That does not count our medical team. Medical staff, we have approximately seven, and that's nurses, doctors, psychiatrists, and so now we've just added a, what we call a QMHP, which is a qualified mental health professional. They are part-time, so I think their staffing numbers with their part-time position is eight. So 45 security staff assigned to the Rockbridge Regional Jail that are my employees.
Mr. Alligood.
Thanks for your work.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for your invitation.
Question.
Sure.
You had mentioned that the average daily cost is $96 per inmate.
Yes, sir.
What percent is paid by the state and what percent is paid by others?
So after the, after the funding from the Commonwealth, the revenues come in, and then the localities pick up the difference, the average for, the localities are paying about $54 of that $96 per day. So I did not write it down a percentage, but I wrote down a figure. So I apologize for that. So I would, we're all, it used to be about a 52-48 split, and so that's obviously with needs and operational needs and different things, medical needs, that, those types of things, that those percentages do fluctuate. But $54 and some change is actually the cost burdened by the localities of that fee.
Dennis.
Superintendent, thank you for being here.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
I work for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, so I work with your staff frequently, and I'm a big fan of the folks over there. They work very hard.
Thank you.
Question for you. The $96 roughly per head, the cost to take care of inmates, I know there's been some discussions about either expanding the existing jail or perhaps partnering with other localities for a larger facility. Just generally, in a larger facility where we're sharing costs with other localities, do you think that that number would be lower in a larger facility or not? And I understand there are other, you know, concerns involved in that, but I'm just, in terms of financials, do you think it would be less expensive to have them housed in a larger facility?
So obviously, a larger facility would be a larger budget, more officers, more revenue, more inmate-per-day revenue coming in from the Commonwealth of Virginia. Depending on what comes out of legislation and the actions that are in place now, there is, several bills have been tabled, and we were certainly frustrated by that, but it is what it is. But to pin your question down and specifically give you an answer, depending on the size of the facility that we had and the available space to generate revenue for bed rental, in other words, they are not inmates assigned to us, but we would have bed space for other, for other institutions or jails to contract bed us, with us, it actually could be cheaper. It just depends on how large you are and how much space you have available. Currently, we pay in our operational costs, we pay for, right now, through COVID, I think we were at 76 contract beds, which equates to about approximately $750,000, $800,000 a year. And through, since the Virginia Department of Corrections reopened in March of '21, they are now temporarily closed for the spike. But since they reopened, we've gotten those bed numbers down to 30. So we've saved significant amount of dollars for both the local revenue regarding that.
To piggyback on that question, if we were in a position that we were taking inmates, is that price fixed by the state, or is that something you could say, gosh, our costs are 96, we're going to charge 110 to have a premium for?
So generally, when I negotiate a contractual bed, I look at our actual, what our actual costs are after our revenues have been paid in. And so we would generally do that. If I were on the receiving end of that negotiation, I would look at approximately $38 to $40, $45 bed rental per day plus medical. So right now, currently in that $96, we are paying 100% of their bed space, their time in jail, and any medical needs that they have. So that's also included in there. A lot of things are included in that $96. If we contract a bed, we would have a flat bed rate, whatever that may be, and that could change each year depending on our jail cost report and how we are operating, you know, and how effectively and efficiently we are operating. But that does not include any external medical services or internal medical services. We would actually charge for that. So there, you would recoup, I won't say 100% of your costs, but a very large portion in a bedroom.
Very good. One more question, and I'll let the city manager have a word. When you look at the recidivism being so high, do you all have a stated goal that you're working towards for that? I mean, the ideal situation would be zero.
Absolutely.
People would reform and not come back to the wonderful treatment that you and your staff provide them. But is there a stated goal or objective that you're working towards?
I have a personal goal. I can't say that it's a, it's a commission's goal or an agency's goal. I would love to see, as we, you know, we're in our, just in our beginnings of our industry's program and the things that we have established to try to focus on these offenders, the reentry program begins while they're incarcerated, and then it follows them into the community. But one of the two, the two biggest things that we try to focus on as the jail administration is work programs and programs where they can obtain their license back even if it's restricted, a restricted permit, and have a job. That's a huge thing. That's a huge hurdle for especially felons, even nonviolent felons, just to simply get a job. And so we focus very hard on that, and we've been very successful with that. And so with that, I think if we can provide them programming while incarcerated, get them employed, and work with them through their incarceration, and if they are released from us into our localities, provide them a stable program and services where they can have counseling and they always have some, there's something there to help them during their trials and tribulations of life as they face reentry to include their employment. I think we truly have a great opportunity to see at least a 50% reduction in that number. Now, that's, that's large.
Bold.
But it's bold. But go big or go home, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Good to have a goal to shoot for.
Yeah.
Jim.
Almerod, you made the comment about medical costs, and I just wanted to ask you to elaborate on that. If there are medical costs that are provided to inmates in our facility, we don't charge the inmates for that. We charge the facility where they're coming from. Is that correct?
So if I understand your question correctly, Jim, if we had a contract bed and we provided them medical services, they would be billed for those services at the going rate, the other facility?
Yes, not the individual. Yes, sir.
Not the individual. Yes, you're correct.
Mr. Alligood.
One more question.
I have it.
When inmates are released-
Yes, sir.
Do they have a place to go?
Not always, and that's the unfortunate situation. So what happens is that a lot of times offenders find themselves institutionalized in their social environment. And so when they are released, they find themselves going right back into that social environment, and it's highly probable that they reoffend in that situation. So to answer your question, no, they do not always have a place to go. We have released two, we've released inmates with, out of our facility that did not have a place to go.
Do we have, a follow-up on that, do we have a sense, or do you have a sense of the numbers that don't have a place to go?
I do not, but what I can tell you now with our TAPS program and our, and our grant that's in place, we address that issue. We address housing. We address day-to-day expenses. That grant helps us address those. And what's really important for us is as they work for us in our work programs and our educational programs, we begin to identify whether the environment they're going to return to is healthy. And so our folks work with them to determine those types of, what's best for them in that environment. And so we begin, as they start into reentry internally and work with us, we start to provide them positive reentry environments to get into. So a program that we, that you're familiar with is called Home Electronic Incarceration. So we evaluate HEI, and we don't, we make sure that where they're going to be incarcerated in their residential living space meets our criteria.
Well, what a great program we could have if we could assure inmates that are released have a place to go, to sleep, and be fed, to get started, maybe, maybe in a matter of days or some period of time. And are there grant opportunities that would help provide funds for things like that?
Well, we are involved in a grant now that does provide housing. It is temporary, but it does get them on their feet. So yes, sir, there are grants that do that. We are involved in one currently, and so you're exactly right. So the two largest hurdles are shelter or housing and work, a job.
Right, and without that, you wouldn't expect-
That's exactly right.
-a released person to be successful.
Correct.
Right, it's critical.
So, and we focused on both of those.
Briefly, thank you again for, a couple years ago, you gave us a tour-
Absolutely.
-very eye-opening. It's the only time I've ever been there. Also, to uplift your officers throughout the pandemic, how you all have navigated it with several hundred inmates, and just even for the folks that drive by the jail sometimes, whether on their way just around town, part of that building is the county sheriff's office.
Yes.
The entire structure is not the jail.
Correct.
So it is, it is a small facility.
It is.
But that, but that, I do have a question. We still have eight years, seven years of debt service on that facility, right, that we're paying annually through 2028 here in the City of Lexington. So I mean, as we plan for the future, we haven't paid off what we've already built, not for a little bit longer. But would you explain how each locality, and you don't have to go into great detail, but percentage-wise, based on, you know, again, to educate us, the number of inmates that are there, and if they happen to have maybe come from the City of Lexington or Buena Vista or the county, how we all pay for regional jail?
So you're, there's two ways that, there's, there's two formulas that we use in the Finance Committee and the Jail Commission and in our billing cycle. So operationally, the City of Lexington, for instance, pays 5% of the jail's operational costs per month. The City of Buena Vista, 22%, and the County of Rockbridge, 73%. Now, if we do a capital project where your debt service is found, that's a much larger formula for each locality. So it's, so the operational formula is based on population, and the capital formula is based on actual capital projects and a much more equal share, I guess, would be a way to say it. But, so that's how it's, that's how the locality- But, so that's how it's, that's how the localities pay for the difference after the revenues have been taken out and whatever expense is left over. So based on our bills every month, that's how we break it down. That's a short and sweet of it, but.
Mr. Elmerold, when you say population, you mean inmate population or general population?
Inmate population.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thus, 5% of the jail population currently is Lexington residents.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that change, that could change every year. It's been stable for several years. But again, when we, when I build the budget and present it to finance, it's based on the current population of the jail.
Can I clarify that or ask a question? When you say Lexington residents, I think that refers to people who are arrested in Lexington, Virginia, regardless of whether, like if Lexington PD arrests somebody here, and they live in Tennessee, but they're at the jail.
That's correct.
It is on.
If they're housed in our facility with a Lexington city charge, they are assigned to Lexington. Great, great follow-up. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Elmerold.
How are you?
Oh, good.
Good.
First, I want to thank you for respectfully taking care of our citizens who find themselves making a mistake or two. Next, I want to know a little bit more about the drug education you were talking about, and whether, how intensive that is, or whether it's just, it's information-based or rehab-based.
So our, currently, our drug program through our substance abuse is both, it's intensive to a degree, based on the ability of the counselor to come in and see the folks assigned to substance abuse. But part of that substance abuse is now linked to our reentry program. So it is intensive to the point where they begin, they begin to walk in substance abuse per se, or crawl, I should say. And as they work through, while they're incarcerated, they start to meet tiers. And then as they go into the reentry or they come back into society, they follow up with those substance abuse programmings. So it, it just depends. But most of the time, if we can, the folks that we have in there now are in an educational-based tier program. So the goal is to build them right in, as they reenter into society, they have follow-up counseling and abuse treatment outside as well. Does that help answer your question? You're welcome.
Mr. Smith. I agree with what everybody else has said. Thanks for what you do and being here this evening. As the strain of mental health in our society becomes a larger and larger load, what percentage of medical care are you seeing attributed to a mental health counseling to help inmates be more successful when they leave? And secondly, sort of tag onto that, how successful is the program getting released prisoners, their vehicle, you know, their driving licenses and getting them on the road to employment? And how could it, how could it be more successful?
So let me answer the second question first. So getting them a restricted permit, depending on their habitual status, you know, if they've been declared habitual, or they've just simply lost a permit in the process of being arrested, that, that could, based on how the court has them labeled, that, that could give us some roadblocks in obtaining a restricted permit. But the process to obtaining a restricted permit and putting them to work is extremely easy. If they meet the criteria, that is something that's very easy for us to do. Quite a bit of legwork for our staff to do that, but, you know, again, we championed the program idea and this reentry idea to make a successful impact into our communities and reduce our jail population. So those, depending on how they're charged, it's relatively easy. So back to the mental health question. Mental health has certainly become a forefront issue in many regards, and we see it more and more because we're more capable of diagnosing it as they come in. So our inmates now, as they arrive, even as an arrestee, we're not even certain whether they will receive bond or they may be held without, and a bond be issued later by the court, or they're, or they're going to be with us for, you know, a long-term situation until they're tried. We begin immediately to do a health assessment. And in that health assessment, we identify prior mental health issues. Or if they declare, we also look at that. But in the last three or four years, we have focused on both their physical health in that assessment as well as their mental health. So our percentage numbers, because of the way we ask, are up. So I would say, and I'm just guessing because I did not bring medical information with me, 35% would be a conservative number, and it could be higher than that in mental health services. But it's because of the way we evaluate when they come in. Because a lot of times, in mental health cases, if we address, and I'm just going to be, it's probably not the appropriate podium to say this, but a lot of offenders who, especially nonviolent drug offenders who are addicted to narcotics, when they arrive in our facility and we detox them, what we find is a mental and medical train wreck. Because out in the streets, they're using, and so when we evaluate them mentally and medically, we find out they have maybe diabetes, and they weren't treating it on the street. We find out they may have a mental issue. We find out that they've had prior mental problems through, you know, prior physicians and those things, when we go seeking those answers. So when I, we, when we do that mental health and physical assessment, physical health assessment, it is, it's a significant impact into their lives. And so it's because of how we do it now that I think our percentages are up. But one of the things we've, we look for, as soon as we determine that they are physically fit, and they're not going to, you know, they don't have a major cardiac problem, or we have an emergency on our hands, the very first thing we start to look for is their mental, mental health care. Because that can change their lives. If we get them settled, we may actually see a different person in 45 to 60 days than we saw on day one. And so that's huge. Thank you. I hope that answered your question.
I'm going to let, I know Derek's probably had a long day, and we'll continue the conversation at a later date. But for those that are attending a city council meeting for the first time, we have presentations from time to time because we have several joint ventures with area municipalities, Rockbridge County and Buena Vista. And staying in connection and understanding the parts that we don't normally visit in our lives is really important. And so thank you for making time to come and share all this information with us. Thank you for sheltering the jail and built for 54 that's housing over 200.
Well, 241 if we total them all up. But we don't have that many right now. We have 142, but we're only built for 56.
Yeah. And again, thank you for being with us, and I know you'll be in contact with the city manager if there are things that we can do to support your efforts for a more successful outcome for the, our citizens that have made a few mistakes and need some help.
Absolutely. It's our pleasure.
Thank you. And if you want to stay, you are more than welcome, but if you'd like to go home and enjoy your evening.
Okay. I appreciate that. And so I just opened the invitation. If you guys want to come back and visit, our doors are always open. They're open 365 days a year. Always. Lights are always on at Rockbridge Regional. And the other thing I would encourage you to do is, if you have a question, by all means, please call me. Email me, call me, I'd love to chat with you. Okay?
If the students would like to get a firsthand view of the jail, they can certainly contact you and have a tour. It's not anything that's hidden or.
Nope.
Doors aren't locked.
Very transparent. Yes, certain doors are locked, but the doors coming in or not. But again, yes, absolutely. So thank you very much. Appreciate the invitation.
Great. Always interesting to hear and learn more about things going on in our community, for sure. Next presentation on the agenda is from Nathan Straub, our technical IT director. Nathan, if you can state your name and address for the record, and thank you for being with us.
Sure. Nathan Straub, 56, West Overhill Lane, Lexington. So sometime back, city manager Halas approached me and asked me to take a look at the sound system that we're using here today. I think we may have even broached this subject back when we were at Waddell. There were known issues with the, with the system, and we decided to take a look at that to see if we could improve the quality. Some of the issues were when we were virtual, I'm sure we all remember those days, some maybe more fondly than others. Yeah, I know that was a trying time, everybody being on Zoom. But some of the issues were we couldn't get in-person attendees' audio mixed in with the audio from those who were attending virtually and vice versa. So they couldn't hear very well, and I imagine that's the case still. So, you know, we were going to try to see if we could find a way to improve that. So I did go out and contact a couple of companies, you know, who are experts in designing these systems and who have experienced designing systems that are used in the exact same way as this. So we did get some information back from those folks, and, you know, the most complete of which was from a company called Daily Computers. We do some business with them. We buy some computers and equipment from them. We have a working relationship, so they came down and looked at the space and made a proposal that totaled some $21,000. And that would have gone in over top of what we have to mix in the audio from virtual and in-person attendees. So, you know, some of the things that they found were that the system wasn't really designed for what we're using it for, and the acoustics of this room are particularly poor. Large, open spaces, no sound deadening whatsoever, and a lot of hard reflective surfaces and downward firing speakers. So, you know, the sound kind of bounces around in this room. So that's, that's kind of what we discovered, that, you know, in order to make those improvements, we'd have to decide what we wanted to do, which direction we wanted to go, secure some funding, I guess, to make that happen.
And looking at the, you mentioned the audio. Would that provide the video as well, so that you would have interactive?
Yep. There sure was. There was a video piece that would have aimed at camera. I think we settled on one camera with a wide-angle lens that would pick up counsel and most of those in attendance, as well as, you know, persons who wanted to address counsel, I think. So, and then that would have been, you know, able to be added to the live stream.
Gotcha. Be more of almost a drone view of the meeting room as opposed to each individual and rotating?
Right. I think the camera that was quoted was a pan tilt and zoom model, so it could be fixed to look at one spot. It could be set to pan back and forth, or, you know, look at a view of counsel, and then a view of the podium, and then a view of the attendees or however.
Right.
Could be set to rotate through those views.
Gotcha. I was going to say, having attended meetings in the county building that have cameras set up for speaker and audience, and then for the board of supervisors, this would not have that same ability. It would only be one at a time.
It could be done that way. The quote, as quoted at 21,000 was to include the one camera.
Okay.
Yeah. And we did, actually Scott, Leonard and I went over to the county admin building, and Stefan was nice enough to show us his system and kind of show us around, so we were able to pick their brains a little bit as far as what, you know, might work well.
How many cameras do they utilize?
I think they have three.
Three.
Yeah. And, you know, they have a much more complicated box that controls all that stuff.
Right.
Mission control.
Absolutely. Members of council, have any questions for Nathan and his presentation? Mr. Allgaier.
I was, I was just, one of the points that has been recurring concerning meetings here is people in the audience expressing an inability to hear what's spoken. So just in general, can, can the people in the back of this room hear what's spoken now? Is it clear?
I don't get it.
And, and thank you. And so previously, we were getting lots of criticism that that didn't even happen, that there was, and so maybe you all have tweaked some of the things here to improve what we have. And whatnot, I noticed, I think, an improved situation here in this room as well. We just don't have video, but we've got improved sound, so thanks for that.
Sure.
In there to do it. So, so I think that we made a big step that way, because we, we went for a long time with the sound problem.
Well, part of that, the sound problems, I observed, I think, three issues. One, in competition with a basketball game was not a good venue. The maybe 20-year-old ears in the back of the room versus the 50-plus-year-old ears that usually tell us they can't hear us. And lastly, I think it's important for presenters as well as for counsel to lean in, use the microphone, and be amplified. And I think historically, some folks have not fully engaged their microphone, but working for a positive result so people can hear the, the message and the information provided.
That is critical, addressing the microphone directly. They're very directional, so, you know, if you turn your head a little bit, it totally takes the sound stage away.
Depending upon what you're saying.
Right.
If you're saying something you shouldn't, it'll be loud and clear.
Never would ever. But I guess some of the other issues were, since this is a wired system, you know, running these wires, and over time, some of those have become kinked and a little bit frayed, and, you know, they don't make that exact system anymore. So, you know, finding parts for the system if it breaks, you know, we're kind of looking ahead as well, you know, maybe to address some of the issues to, you know, maybe upgrade while, while we were doing it.
Very good. So, thank you.
So the new system would be wireless then, the implication?
As quoted.
Not wires, but wireless.
As quoted, it's wireless.
Right.
Members of council, have any other questions? Nathan, thank you for being with us. Thanks for doing the due diligence, and we'll look forward to you working with the city manager to bring forward recommendations on how we move forward for successful meetings.
Sure. Happy to help.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings. And the first public hearing is a request from Paul Cosmas. I'll invite the city planner, Arnie Glazer. And for those in the journalism class, Arnie's class of 88, 90. Keep trying to make you older. Sorry, pal.
1990, not 1890.
Fellow Washington-Lee grad.
Good evening to you all. Arnie Glazer, planning director. We do have a request for a condition, excuse me, conditional use permit for the property at 17 North Randolph Street. That property is in the C1 zoning district as well as the downtown historic district. Property owner Suzanne Cosmas, and Paul Cosmas is the applicant. On the first floor of an existing building in the C1 zoning district, those are requested for residential use need to request and have approved a conditional use permit. The second floor and higher dwelling units in C1 are allowed by right, but anything that's on the first floor residential unit in C1 is a conditional use permit. There are a couple of use and design standards that go along with that, such as first-floor residential unit should not be visible from a public street, and if the building fronts on a public street, the residential portion of the first floor shall be required to be shielded by office or retail space or a lobby that maintains a commercial appearance. And there's the code section provided to you there. At the bottom of the first page, just to give you an example or an image of the building, is a photograph of the front of 17 North Randolph Street. And on page two, just a location map showing zoning districts, and also, again, location of the property at 17 North Randolph Street. The reason for shielding the residential space, this is a fairly common item in zoning ordinances, where you're trying to maintain the pedestrian activity along a street, and you don't want to have dead space. you don't want to have dead space such as residential space, which is commonly not occupied during the day, and they're not really going to have the windows open and have a nice display in their front window. So it's not uncommon to have a requirement for those pedestrian streets or highly active streets to have a requirement that they are allowed upstairs, second floor and higher by right. But if they're going to be on that first floor, they should at least be towards the back of the building or have some sort of commercial component in front of them. Staff did make a recommendation for approval and has since amended that to think a little bit more about parking spaces in that area of town. We are about to lose a lot directly across the street, which we have historically leased, and that property is sold, so that access won't be there for additional public parking directly across the street. So the recommendation has been changed to require, if there is an approval, to at least to require the property owner to provide two off-street parking spaces. In, I'm sorry, while this subject parcel may not be ideally suited for retail, as previously mentioned, the commercial, the conversion of the first-floor space will reduce the amount of downtown commercial space for retail and office uses by approximately 1,475 square feet, just sort of balance out between, if you're going to go residential on that, what are you going to lose on the commercial side of the square footage? Page three contains the typical issuance or conditions for issuance that you see for every single CUP. If you just keep those in mind as you're making your decision. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the 27th of January. There was a motion made for approval, and that was voted down by a vote of three to four. And we did provide you with the minutes from that particular meeting so you can follow along with the discussion. Again, it was close. It was a four to three vote. We do have additional items that were submitted by the applicant since the Planning Commission meeting, and those are, as far as pages of your packet, would be 17, oh, sorry, 18, 19, 20, and 21, and 22. And then we also included the comment that came in prior to the Planning Commission meeting from a neighboring property owner who actually owns properties on two sides of the subject parcel. That's all I have for public presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Members of council, have any questions for Arnie? Yes, Mr. Alligood?
Do we have in the city other C1s where we have CUPs allowing residential use on the first floor?
Yes, sir, we do. More recent approval on Courthouse Square, three particular units, I believe. Can't remember if it was only one that was on the first floor, but that was an approval within the last two years. As I understand, we have had past approvals at Dutch Inn, perhaps the Lyric Theater as well. Those are the ones I can think of off the top of my head, and there may certainly be more.
So it's not like this will be a brand-new thing. It's already occurred in several places in the city?
Yes, sir, it has.
In the C1 district?
Correct.
But not?
Most of those, I would say, in the two of those, there is a commercial component on the front side. That was not required in the approval for the Courthouse Square because Courthouse Square doesn't front on a public street. So there was concession or the ability to put those in without that commercial component in on the front side of the lower floor.
Yeah, I would just echo and say definitively, there are no first-floor apartment or residential at all in downtown Lexington with their, a street front. No street frontage residential.
But there is residential right across the street from from, I mean, there are apartments right across the street from this one, correct?
We're in a different zoning district there, but yes.
But but it would not be out of character for this particular neighborhood to have first-floor rental units there. Am I right in that or?
Correct. If you're considering everything immediately adjacent, we happen to have commercial on this side of the street and residential and residential light commercial on the other side of the street. I would consider those completely different just because of the zoning. But you're right, if you're standing in the middle of the street and you're looking around at things that are in close proximity, yes, we have some first-floor residential space in close proximity.
Did it come up how long it, the units on the first floor, the commercial units now have been vacant? Do we know that information?
I will let the applicant respond to that because I don't know that.
Okay. So there were seven, is that the right number, seven? Seven units on the first floor?
I believe it was either six or seven that were sort of in a suite style, if I remember the presentation from Planning Commission correctly. And I believe that in the last year, there may have been still one tenant there and largely vacant prior to that.
So if this were to be granted, there would have to be significant renovations done on the first floor to accommodate apartments, correct?
I have not been in the space, but that is a presumption, I think, that we can make.
Got it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Do all of the first-floor residential CUPs in C1 have off-street parking? So the Lyric does, correct? The Lawyer's Row?
It does.
Does.
And Dutch Inn, I'm pretty certain, does also.
Right. Okay.
Just to be clear on the use and design standards for the C1 district, I mean, it says you can use a CUP to, let's see, dwelling units occupying the first floor of any structure shall only be allowed with a conditional, conditional use permit. One, first-floor residential units should not be visible from a public street. Two, if the building fronts on a public street, the residential portion of the first floor shall be required to be shielded by office or retail space or lobby that maintains a commercial appearance. So I'm not, on the second part, on the, you shall be required to do that. Why, why would we not require that? I know when I was on the Planning Commission, when we did the building on Courthouse Square, it was going to be a single residence, and it is not on a street frontage. It did not meet the requirement of fronting on a public street because it goes out to that courtyard area, and it really isn't too visible from a public street. So we were very conscious about making that decision. And like you mentioned, it does have parking in the back. So why would we totally ignore this requirement for this?
I think in my initial assessment, this is not a high-value pedestrian street. There isn't retail immediately adjacent in this block at all unless you consider the SUDs that are being sold maybe at the laundromat. So just taking that into perspective, but you're correct, having, I should have held more directly to the standards in my initial recommendation for this, and it does not meet because it is on a public street and it should be shielded by those things that you've mentioned.
And I'm okay if we want to work towards helping a person, you know, do what they want with their property within our zoning. So, you know, as Dennis mentioned, there's housing across the street. So this is on the very edge of the C1. Across Henry Street is R1 residential, and then Catty Corner is RLC. And what he's proposing is having a multifamily dwelling, which is allowed in RLC. So would one option be to rezone this to RLC? And what's the downfall with that?
If you, oh, sorry, if you rezone to RLC, it would require three separate applications because in the residential light commercial zoning district, which is Catty Corner, so you don't have to worry about spot zoning, it's in close relation to other zoning that is similar. But you have three separate applications. The first one, if you're going to rezone, in RLC, multifamily units are a conditional use permit. So you're talking about a rezoning to RLC with the companion CUP for multifamily units. And then while you're evaluating that, you're all of a sudden not in the C1, so you're not exempt from parking. So parking comes into play, off-street parking requirement. And then the third part that would have to be also submitted at the same time is a comp plan amendment because we are in a different future land use designation. So we have to change the future land use designation to be able to rezone the property. So you're doing three applications to allow what's similar to what is, would be allowed in the CUP, as long as they met the requirements of having that, those retail, I'm sorry, the residential spaces shielded.
So as long as he puts something up front to shield it, we could do a CUP and maybe address the parking if he's having additional, I mean, right now, the proposal is to put four extra, two units, four extra bedrooms downstairs. But because even putting, I don't know, using part of it for residential and he can determine how much, how many units that is, we could still require park, allow it in part of the building on the first floor, maybe require parking as well?
Yeah, you have a, because this is a legislative act, you have a lot of discretion in your decision. You could deny it, you could approve it, you could approve it with conditions, or you could send it back in direct staff, as an example, to do a rezone and conditional use permit and comp plan amendment, if you like. In your example, yes, you can require, sorry, I'm not going to answer this maybe completely enough, but you can require that space to be in compliance with the code, meaning the first 10 feet, the first 20 feet, whatever you think is appropriate. And then I think they remind me, but I believe the companion piece of that was there is no parking requirement in C1, but you can still add conditions to any CUP approval as long as you connect the impact, the presumed impact, to the need for that. So if you see extra bed space that is now permanent, like overnight, it's not just people coming during the day for parking, but overnight, and if that's additional parking, then if you believe there's a need for additional space, then yes, you can put in a condition that requires more parking.
We'll get to hear from the applicant in a moment, but it seems to make sense working towards a portion of the the street side of the property being commercial and allowing the latter part to be residential, much like a previous city council did at the Dutch Inn. I don't know structurally or proportionally what size makes sense, and I'm not sure that we're well-equipped. It may be a condition of approval, perhaps, that we may want to consider staff to work with what that will look like with architects and certainly with the integrity of the building. But if that makes sense. But the conditional use permit would be to move forward with commercial space in the front, street fronting and residential in the back is an option that can get us there. Dennis?
I just, I, looking at that property, I mean, if you actually go to that property and look at it, clearly the best use is residential. I mean, I totally understand our zoning requirements and, you know, that we want to have commercial and commercial zones, but in that particular instance, it's a bad fit. And that's why we have a PUC. I mean, that's why we do these. And I think in this particular instance, that's the fastest way to solve this problem. You know, sometimes we have to depart from the typical zoning laws, and if you look at the facts on the ground, this would seem to be a good place to do that.
I would invite our city attorney to come up and join Arnie and address the implications with not following our code because all C1 would be subject to all. So arbitrarily deciding that that piece of property would work fits another, on another street arbitrarily deciding it's C1, then everybody can have a conditional use permit and it, so I would submit to you. But I think that a great compromise and I am hopeful to find a business, know of a fellow that's looking for a space, that actually this would lend itself to what he's looking to accomplish with a grab-and-go type of business orientation. And I think the addition, being able to, because there will be overnight guests on the first floor, requiring the parking makes for a positive outcome for the the property as well as for the neighbors. Because there's some letters in there talking about removal of generators and some other improvements to the property that I think the applicant's eager to include with this observation, so. Arnie can always come back for more questions, but at this point, calling the applicant if you want to add to or respond to any of the things you've heard.
Sure. Yeah, thanks. Paul Cosmos, 13 Whitmore Street. Been here two times, so I know I have to do that.
Yes.
Couple of things I'd just like to give you in addition. They're very short, so it's not like I'm asking you to read big reports, but one is an email from the, I'm sure I still got one copy of each. Yes, I do. So one is an email from the executive director, Tracy Lyons of the Chamber of Commerce. I had a conversation with her today at the mayor's suggestion that I reach out to her. And if I could just briefly cite what she said in that very short email. As we chatted about, we're in desperate need of affordable, reasonably-priced, that's my word and also her word in our conversation, workforce housing in our region. The downtown area is primed to have individuals, both young and at retirement age, living and working in downtown. Your desire to want to create more livable space in the historic downtown area will contribute to the livelihood of the Diamond Hill community, Randolph Street neighborhood, as well as the historic downtown. I wish you the best of luck and would love to support you in whatever way possible. So the supplemental materials that I provided, I hope that you all had the chance to read my original application letter. I thought I made a reasonable argument as to why this is the highest and best use of the property. We think it's in the neighborhood's best interest. We think it's in, I'm the property manager. I've lived here for 26 years, raised my five kids here. My mom actually owns the property. Forgive me for being a little bit nervous. I'm not, this is not my best environment, but.
Middle school scares us all. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah. So I'm here advocating on behalf of this, you know, small family property that I've worked in, that I've lived in occasionally in the second-floor building for 17 years. We've owned this. The vacancy rate on the upstairs, that's two by right residential units, is zero in the 17 years, I would say, other than maybe perhaps one transitional month here or there between a law student or a tenant leaving and another one coming in. Downstairs, 17 years, including the tenants that we had in the building when we purchased it in 2004, I've never had more than 50% occupancy. In our personal experience in that building, in that location, commercial office space is not something, it's very affordable, I must say. Seven units, a couple of them have connecting doors, so they could be combined as suites, as Arnie said, but seven separate rooms, each with their own lockout doors, including utilities and including internet. My tenants that just recently vacated were paying between $100 and $200 a month, or maybe a little bit more if they had a suite, if they had two, access to two rooms. I challenge you to find any place in Lexington to rent, including your utilities and your internet, for $100 or $200 a month, $150, $200 a month. It was affordable, it was clean. It's not the fanciest building, like Tim Welsh's next door is a beautiful, professional workspace that any lawyer would be proud or any financial professional would be proud to have their clients come to. Mine's maybe not quite like that. It's a little more entry-level, you know, startups and stuff, and that's who we had. We had hairstylists, we had people that repaired computers and Xerox machines, music teachers, estheticians, people that do nails and waxing and things like that. But the last two years have been difficult for everybody, both businesses and landlords, property managers. So our vacancy rate has been low. I, in fact, had to do a significant amount of rent abatement on my tenants in that building because of pandemic over the last two years, significant amount. Without getting the percentages, I'll just say easily over 50% rent abatement over the last two years on the tenants that I had that already had very reasonable rent. So I've advertised in the papers, as one would expect a property owner to do. I put signs in the windows, I put signs in the yards for 17 years. I did all the things you would expect a property owner to do to get tenants in the commercial space, and I have not had takers. space, and I have not had takers. At the planning commission meeting, it was expressed concern that I was reducing inventories, Arnie pointed out. Well, yes, if you convert something from commercial to residential, then yes, you're, you're reducing the inventory. The question is, does that have an impact on the demand in the city? And I submit, based on my personal experience for 17 years, it doesn't. Based on my neighbor's experience in a more high-end property, it doesn't. He has not had 100% occupancy of the second floor. Based on what Ms. Lyons told me, there are lots of other opportunities in downtown, as this email pointed out, or as my other article point, my other little submittal pointed out. There's Lex Work, there's Lex Co-Work, there's Start Here Lexington. There's even available space in the building that the chamber occupies, she said. We have offices, small office spaces here, and we have availability on the, she didn't say what percentage or when, but she indicated there's availability. So I submit that the reduction of commercial space is not actually having a negative impact. The demand for residential space, however, is immense. I know that also personally from the other property on Lewis Street that I manage, that my family owns. It's my mom's vacation home. We rent it out part-time when she's not here. So I've had visiting professors at WNL, visiting professors at BMI, visiting professionals who need to come to town, not for a year-long lease and not for a weekend, people who need to be here for a month, two months, three months. I've had people that are building a home in town or in the county that need temporary, excuse me, temporary housing. I've had people who are here actually just to fish, to fly fish the area, so to enjoy what the town has to offer. Had people who are here that are modding professionals. And he has, he just left this one tenant, and he said, I have a team of six that's coming over from England and Europe, and I need housing for all of them. Do you have anything? So I have visiting professionals, this workforce and this living need, that is a demand that is been borne out by my own experience, attested to by the professional property managers, the three main, I think, property managers in Lexington, which I submitted their things, and also by the director, executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. It's a need, and I'm trying to fill that need. And I think in a very reasonable way, in a very reasonable location, it's an investment, a significant financial investment to make this conversion. So we're actually betting on Lexington that it will pay off. I think it will, it adheres in supports to Lexington City's comprehensive plan, as I pointed out in my initial application packet, and specifically in, in this last part, this last document, the points of interest little page that I submitted, it, the comprehensive plan specifically calls out policies that bolster Lexington's housing market, promote new development, and reduce long-term financial burdens on property owners. That is an exact quote from Lexington's comprehensive plan. So I submit that what I'm doing here is, in the character of the neighborhood, in the spirit of the comprehensive plan, in the best interest of the downtown community and the people that are coming to Lexington to live and work. And I hope that I make a reasonable case that you see your way through to approve this request and let us make this investment in downtown Lexington and the community and everybody. It's a win-win. I don't see, as I also say in this point of interest letter, I have not heard, actually, I'll address one more thing, but I have not heard any point raised through planning commission or with staff, who, by the way, did recommend approval of our application, I'll reiterate that, and three of four planning members also voted to approve this. So I'm hoping to get four of, out of this council to see their way through to approve it. I don't see any discernible negative impact. So frankly, I, I just think this is a win-win for everybody. It's a win for the neighborhood. We are going to improve the building, the exterior of the building in the, according to the ARB's guidelines and requirements to keep it in the character of the neighborhood. We're going to invest money in local tradesmen and local people that will help the improvement and the upkeep of the building. We're bringing people into downtown that will utilize the businesses and services offered downtown. They will actually be that foot traffic that we want downtown. So I think this is a win-win-win, frankly. It's a win for the people that need a place to live. It's a win for downtown. It's a win for our corner and the neighborhoods that we are a part of, both historic Diamond Hill and downtown, historic downtown. And it's a win for us as property owners. We believe we're willing to make a significant investment. Our estimates, we don't have thoroughly, but I can say this, the architectural plans alone are $8,500. We think it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $125,000 to renovate these two apartments. So we, as property owners, are willing to do that for downtown Lexington and the people that want to come and work here and live here, whether it's long-term or short-term. So I hope that you will also see all of that, the parking that I've heard brought up here and at planning commission. I think it's a reasonable question to ask, and a reasonable answer would be that seven commercial units in there right now, seven, could have seven, if I could have it fully occupied in its current configuration, would have seven or possibly more, if there were more than, for instance, two music teachers I had in one unit, seven vehicles associated with that, plus the people that are visiting, their students, their haircut clients, their waxing and nail tech clients. So you can assume some factor of seven units that is the by right, commercial C1 zoning, the parking is not required, no off-street parking is required. You're think, you're, I mean, you can just do sort of basic cocktail napkin map and think 10, 15, 20 vehicles if we're fully occupied for those seven spaces. So for two apartments, you think two vehicles probably, maybe four, maybe four, but most likely two vehicles for both units total, somewhere between two and four would be a reasonable assumption. So we're actually diminishing the demand on parking downtown between its current configuration and what we're requesting. And finally, on the parking, in the 17 years that I've been there, my, none of my tenants upstairs mostly, but no tenants upstairs or down, and myself, I've never had an issue finding a parking spot directly adjacent to where I can see from a window in my building. On Randolph Street or on Henry Street, which my property has over 100, about 175-foot lot that, something like that. So it's, the long side is on Henry Street. Never had a problem parking there. No one's ever mentioned it to me. So I don't think that there's like a major crunch for parking in that particular location. So I think we're addressing, our use actually inherently addresses the parking issue and reduces the city's requirement to provide parking. I believe that's a fairly reasonable projection or interpretation of that, how our use actually reduces parking requirements that the city would otherwise, in any C1 district, would provide as a utility, as Arnie said, like trash pickup and streetlights. It's essentially a service in C1 that's assumed to be provided by the city. So I guess that's about it. I appreciate all the time that all of you took prior to me getting up here tonight and nervously chattering on. And I appreciate your thoughtful consideration tonight. I hope that you'll see through that this is good for everybody, us included as property owners. It's good for the city, it's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for the people that need to come here and find a place to live. I don't see any downside to it, to be honest. So, but I'm happy to answer questions, and if you have downsides that you suggest, I would be, appreciate the opportunity to address those now while I have the mic, if you have questions for me or some concerns, rather than when I sit down and I don't have another chance to speak again.
You can rest assured, as the applicant, I'm glad to have you speak and address any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will, at some point, hold a public hearing on the issue, but it's your request. I'll happily ask council to provide any questions they have at this time.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, first of all, I'm glad to see that a lot of the realtors realize we do need additional multifamily housing in Lexington, and council is working to address that through this.
My how things can change in a year.
That is the truth. But no, I am glad to hear that, and I appreciate what you're trying to do. We're just trying to make sure you do it within our rules that we have, that everybody else has to follow as well. On the building, what are your plans for exterior improvements?
Well, I would, as Tim Welsh, my neighbor and friend, who I've done a lot of business with over the, well, I mean, a lot of people have done a lot more, but I've done business with him over the years, we would vacate his terms. The, the industrial or commercial wiring that I had when I had a small business there, I had servers and computer servers back in, you know, the mid 2000s. And so I added a generator in the backyard and, which Tim installed all this at quite a bit of expense for me, which I was happy that I was able to do it. But in any case, to support that business, but it, that business failed in 2008 with the economy, and so they've sat dormant. So I have several air conditioning units in the back that are attached to the building, a generator that's in the backyard. I'd like to reclaim that green space, paint the building, landscape, and do improvements to the outside to make it appealing to guests that would come and stay for a month. I want to make it as attractive and as appealing as possible. So all of those things that you would anticipate, off the top of my head, painting, landscaping, and removing the commercial industrial-looking stuff from the side of the building that faces Tim and the rear.
And put the trashcans around back and keep them out of sight.
Happily move the trashcan and put, build a nice new fancy trashcan container.
Yep.
As long as the collection men don't, are happy with it, because.
There's a step off.
Yeah, there's a fairly steep limestone ledge that, in the rear, as the building, as you know, that slopes up the hill there on Henry Street, up to the, from the pavement to the sidewalk is anywhere from 18 to 24 inches, give or take a little. It's a limestone ledge that, then there's the sidewalk that goes more or less directly into a gently sloping backyard. So I would obviously have to meet whatever requirements that the collection workers, the sanitation workers would need so that they could get there. But I'm happy to relocate it to a place that's both attractive and feasible for the collection workers.
I'll give you clarity that most of the businesses maintain their trash receptacles behind or in their buildings and put them out at night for collection.
Okay.
Not permanently on the sidewalk or adjacent to it.
Understand. Happy to do that.
Yep.
Happy to meet those standards.
And just one other question. When is the last time you advertised your property for rental?
I don't know the exact date, but it was before the pandemic. Like, as I said, during the pandemic, not only did I not have people asking for space, I had my tenants asking for rent rebates. So it was sometime before, more than two years ago. But every time that I did, I would advertise for months in the news gazette and put signs in the window, to the point where, as a property manager, I had to make a decision. Does it look good to have for rent signs plastered all over the building for months on end and to also advertise in the paper, reducing the rent month after month? I had to think, that's not in our best interest, and it's, really doesn't look good in the neighborhood, does it, in my opinion? What do you think? Do you think having a for rent sign for three, four, five, six months is a good look for a neighborhood, or not?
No, I just, but sometimes you do have to actively advertise. I know some other people own commercial office space in town, and they hustle to get clients, you know? It's not just a matter of putting a sign in the window or an ad in the paper. It is actively going out and talking to, to people and meeting with Main Street Lexington and seeing what's going on in town, working with some of these programs, like the Walker Program that's going to bring out some, some new entrepreneurs that at some point are going to need some kind of space and getting connected in that way. So I do think you have to use multi, particular in commercial real estate, have to use particular way, varieties, have to use many varieties of advertising, not just the old, put a shingle on the window and add in the paper.
Well, I think, I would submit that the efforts that I undertook to advertise were reasonable and typical. What you're talking about, networking, marketing and stuff like that, certainly, that can help, and I could probably use a lot of improvement. I have to admit, that's not my thing. You can tell just how nervous I am up here right now. So I did not take advantage of those resources, but I do think I did everything that's reasonable. When the city needs to advertise a CUP, they put a notice in the paper. That's the legal requirement, the legal standard for the community to know of this. So I think for me to put signs in the window, to also, as I mentioned at planning, talk to my tenants and say, if you know anybody, you know, please, we can use some more space here, and advertise in the paper for months, multiple months. I think that's pretty standard and.
We won't come to a conclusion on what the most efficient or effective method is tonight, I don't think, and we certainly won't legislate that. Members of council, have any other questions for the applicant currently? You will have an opportunity after the public hearing to pose any additional questions. Mr. Smith?
In your application, you referred to Lexington's comp plan, specifically following goals set on page 29, and you have mentioned four. Two were about the local economy.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So offer a business-friendly environment with opportunity for all residents.
Correct, yep.
The second for local economy is attract new businesses and investments that increase the city's tax base, diversify the economy and promote job growth. So I'm not, I guess, fully clear on how adding residences contributes to these two clauses that you've used to support your argument. The other two I get, that's fine.
Okay.
So I'm just curious about that.
So the following paragraph after that highlight of those four points, I think, elucidates that somewhat, but I can say, one, it creates jobs for the housekeeping and maintenance of the property, of the rental property. That's different from a commercial space. The, just the contracting alone for the conversion is going to create, as I mentioned, seasonal construction jobs to the tune of spending over $100,000 in downtown Lexington for building improvement. That's just the internal, that's our estimates for the interior renovations, not the exterior renovations. I haven't actually budgeted for that yet. So I think that's two ways. The other way is that it, it creates opportunity to have workspace, as Ms. Lyons identified, reasonably priced, affordable workspace living for visiting professionals, the artists, the teachers, the contractors, the professional, you know, white-collar workers that are coming to the area on not a 12-month basis, but on a 30, 16, 90-day basis repeatedly. So those people contribute largely to the economy. It's a demand that is screaming for attention, and they spend their money downtown. They literally walk out their doors and buy things from the businesses downtown. They eat meals downtown. They enjoy the parks downtown. They take advantage of all of, that Lexington has to offer, and in a way that a long-term resident doesn't, in some ways, you might say, I might say. But in any case, it contributes to the economy several ways. The money that we're spending to do the renovation, to maintain the building, and to create opportunities for these workspace, living opportunities for people that need it, and will spend their money and their time in Lexington while they're here.
Another thing that pops out in that paragraph you just referred to, that, I guess, again, I'm trying to sort through.
Yeah.
And using Tracy's email, supporting your cause about affordable workforce housing in the region, and I'm presuming you're focusing this phrasing for your, for your project or, because.
Well, all I can say is, you know, our application says that it's a mix of short and long-term housing. In Lexington, the distinction falls at the 30-day mark, and anything under 30 days is technically short-term. So that would generate transient occupancy tax. Anything longer than 30 days is long-term. So 30 days or 31 days is long-term, and from the city standpoint, that's the same as 365 days. The, I'm sorry, I forgot where I was going with that.
Well, you're going along the track that I was trying to. Well, you're going along the track that I was trying to get us on because you referred to the transient occupancy tax in your application. And then I'm hearing short-term, I'm hearing long-term. I'm really not sure what the intent of the residential portion of the first floor is. And it goes to, it's a C1 district, so it's commercially designed as use. And to Leslie's point, that's why we have zoning and why we have the conditions of changing the use. And to like to Dennis's point, well, maybe it is a good fit. I guess that, as we've heard, reasonable and fair are up to the eyes of the beholder. I'm working through this, like, and I'm glad you're here to answer all these questions. And I'm just still searching for clarity on what the actual residential use is going to be because I think that's important.
Well, the demand that we see, as I mentioned, and that we will primarily direct our advertising, our marketing towards our tenancy, because we think it, A, provides, it meets the demand, meets the need, the demonstrated need. And B, we think it's sort of the best mix of use for us, is the sort of 30 to 90-day window. So that's a monthly rental that is for someone visiting professionals typically. As I said, the people that I've had, I can list them, you know, a theater professor at WNL, a biology professor at VMI, a Modine professional, two actually, from Modine that are here for 30 days and they're coming back in another 60 or 90 days. A couple who's building a home right outside town and they need a place to stay while they're doing that. A woman there currently who is a retired professional county administrator, and she is looking to relocate here. So she figured, I can't do this from a distance. I need to come and be on-site to look at these houses. And in today's housing market, she's right. The very first day she was here, she said, the two I was looking at are gone already. So I made the right decision in coming here and renting something, to find something. You know, I could go on and on, but those types of people, professional workforce people, we're not talking about like subsidized housing, we're talking about professionals that need, that are visiting the area, that are going to come, they're going to be here. Question is, do you want them downtown accessible to the livelihood of downtown Lexington? Or do you want to push them to the only place they can find out past Waffle House or wherever in the extended area that they might find some availability? So does Lexington want to support property owners and investors to invest their money in downtown to meet an established demand? Or do we want to make it difficult for investors to meet a need? That's our typical thing. Now, I mean, that's our anticipated market. We made the application as a mix of short and long-term, which would indicate anything less than 30 days would generate transient occupancy tax. I clearly, as a property manager, wouldn't really want to bind my hands and say only 30 days in this particular location. In other locations, perfectly appropriate. But here, I think, a mixture of short and long-term so that we can maximize the return on investment, maximize the use of the property, which again, increases foot traffic, increases vibrancy of the downtown, increases our incentive to keep the building in top shape, looking beautiful. I think all of those things, that's why we asked for a mix of short and long-term. We anticipate the majority would be 30 to 90-day occupants, but we would infill, if we had gaps, we would make it available to infill gaps between those rentals with shorter stays. That's our anticipated use. That's why we made our application with that particular wording.
Right. Thank you.
And it would generate tax revenue on both sides. The assumedly, the, for sure, transient occupancy tax would be generated on anything less than 30 days. Assumedly, with the improvements to the building and the neighborhood as it develops and grows, which I hope, you know, Randolph Street will, because it is an underutilized portion of the downtown, the tax base will go up, the assessment will go up. We just heard that we're getting new assessments. So one can presume that with improvements, the assessment, the value of the building increases.
Yes. Mr. Welsh made it clear he'd love to see some improvements in the property.
And I fully commit to that. You have my word. That's in our best interest as well.
Absolutely.
Money will be spent to that to bringing it, to making it look beautiful.
Yes. I'm going to suspend the questions from council. Thank you for your time. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this topic.
Thank you all for your time now and earlier today, the ones that applied to me. I really appreciate it.
And we're currently on open public hearing on Paul Cosmas's request to allow dwellings on the first floor of the building located in the C1 zoning district. Not identifying anybody that wants to speak to this topic, I'll close the public hearing at 8:36. And I would ask for council's thoughtful consideration and/or additional discussion. I'll preface it by saying or reminding myself, it's fantastic to have a motivated property owner who wants to improve their property. This is commercial property and residential, we advocate and support and utilize a multitude of staff, time and services for second-story and above housing. And so we're eager to produce that. However, in the C1 district, we have a consistent process of requiring business activity on the street facing front of a building. And would suggest that council consider that, our policy, as we consider this request, knowing that it would not eliminate housing in the plans for Mr. Cosmas and his family, but modify it.
I'll just continue with discussion before making a motion. You know, if anybody, like you mentioned before, you feel like this is an appropriate use, then we should take the time to rezone it to RLC where this type of use is allowed. He will have to find parking for at least the new, I assume the upstairs could be grandfathered, but for any new bedrooms he adds, he would have to find parking either on his property or we give some leeway to contracting within a reasonable area. But if it's going to stay as C1, you don't get the advantages of being in a C1, meaning no parking, without following the requirements of the C1. So I think it's very important that we remember that and we're setting a precedent. And if you don't think we're setting a precedent, I would be happy to ask Jared if that's the case, that if we don't have clarity on why we would allow something like this to happen there. If a similar issue comes up again, where somebody can't rent their property, they haven't advertised it in two years, but they can't rent it, then they too should be able to turn their ground floor in commercial to residential if they choose. So I am willing to, I don't know what the best way of doing it is continuing the public hearing to give him an opportunity to bring back a new plan, or if we just deny this and he brings forward. I'm not sure what's clear, but.
Well, I would say to that, I hear what you're saying and I understand that we need to stick with precedent. But there is a solution to this problem, the one that the staff recommended. And I think we should take that solution. And I think that we should approve the CUP request with the condition, and actually, we need to talk about that condition for the parking too, because there may not be space for two onsite parking spaces. So if we're going to require that, maybe we need to say that he needs to find within a reasonable distance two parking spaces, but not necessarily on the property itself. Because that may be impossible to do. But I think we should move forward with the staff recommendation. And that's what I would propose. And I would welcome hearing from our other city council members.
First off, I mean, I think generally speaking, it's a reasonable request. It's on the outskirts of our commercial district. It is actually bordered by former residences. The buildings in that part of town that are C1 are obviously former homes. There's, I'm not sure about Tim Welsh's building, but the two homes between Tim Welsh and Century Link, or the two buildings, if you will, that are in C1 are obviously former houses. The property directly behind this piece of property that WNL now leases long-term is a house that they happen to have as office space, that WNL, you know, is office space encroaching into a residential neighborhood, if you will. And then there's a church. But in a way, when we zone this C1, that we, those were, those are three houses that I just referenced that you actually took out of the residential market. And that's okay. I also look at this as, this is a gentleman who wants, a family that wants to invest in downtown. And part of what he would like to, what he's proposing, and he's not hiding it, it could be a short-term rental, which is rentals 30 days or less. We've lived that discussion. I, if you remember, was adamantly opposed of short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods because I felt that weekend rentals are a commercial enterprise. That when you're just bringing people in, doing transactions on Airbnb, I thought that that was a business. A lot of folks didn't. We ended up allowing short-term rentals. Doesn't matter where you live, in Providence Hill, Jackson, on Massey Street, anywhere, you could have a short-term rental when you're not there in your house for 45 days a year and do that whole transaction on Airbnb. This is essentially, this is very close to downtown. This is a applicant that's saying, I might do that. And I do, I've thought for years that that is commercial. So I kind of can see that. What could come of this property? I guess it's in the commercial district. He could add a third floor and a fourth floor, right? And a fifth floor and a sixth floor, and just do apartments the whole way up, as long as they're not on the first floor. That's, and so we could completely change the nature of the neighborhood if he wanted to do that. So that's not on the table. Something a little bit maybe more tasteful is what we're discussing. And so I point at that. And then right now, I mean, getting into the, I had a discussion with him and we always have to be really careful where I, where I said, well, did you market it this way or do that? And then I'm kind of like, no, knock it off. It's not my business, you know? Like, be really careful to not overstep my bounds on telling someone that I don't like the color they might paint their house and that's why it hasn't sold, you know? Have you tried this? It's, I'm out of my league. It's not my place. But the pandemic changed the need for a lot of commercial space. And the current setting of six or seven commercial spaces of 300 square feet, 400 square feet, 200 square feet, a lot of people now with a laptop, that's what they do in their house. And they might run a business out of their house. And this is, again, space that this could be leveraged into a live-work dwelling, which is a by right use of the C1 district, which is a building where you sort of live and you can work out of your house. So I'm getting there to understand that this is something that we could pretend, that I see as enhancing downtown Lexington, adding housing back to that part of town that has lost a few buildings. And I think it improves the building, which is something that the neighbors have asked for and their applicants willing to do it. So I'm considering this as a reasonable request.
I'm not sure that, I'm trying to remember what you just stated, but a.
Live-work dwelling.
Live-work dwelling is not by right.
See, I thought it was a C1 business district, it's a B. It's a B, by right for a live-work dwelling, when I check our zoning.
If you live upstairs.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, commercial, first floor, non-residential for many, 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 many years. And the character of that neighborhood, I think there was a desire, as you had Century Link on the corner, Laundromat, for that to become and be developed. And arguably, Mr. Welsh has done a nice job of developing a more commercial feel. And that's the direction the city has promoted in that area. So.
Well, and that building was a store for decades too. It has a long, sorry, it has a long history of being a commercial space. And those other commercial spaces on that very street, the houses you mentioned are being used as commercial and are rented out.
Ms. Alexander.
I think what I see here is a situation where we have a post-pandemic situation in regard to inconsistencies with our zoning. You know, that there's a clashing of the post-pandemic era and people working out of their home and people doing short-term employment, those kinds of things, and the need for housing in Lexington. I would like to be able to see Mr. Cosmas get there with what he needs to have. But I think we need to do it fairly because we have possibly turned people away or turned them down for wanting to do the same thing. So I'm not sure how we can get there. I guess that's an Arnie question. The other comment that I have is somewhere along the way, I think I heard that if that front entrance becomes a lobby, that could possibly work or no?
Well, Arnie's approaching. Two things I would suggest to you is that, because it's in the commercial district, it could become a rent-a-room for a month or a week and become a bit of a hotel. And to conform with the other hotels, there's no lodging on the first floors, I think by code. So to remedy, to help Mr. Cosmas get to where he wants to be, instead of the entire first floor, much like we did at the Dutch Inn, allow for commercial use in the front space, whatever that may be, or lobby-ish, and then the back portion be, would be a compromise. Different in how we get there. I don't know if we direct staff to go work with Mr. Cosmas to modify his application or deny it. But here's Arnie.
Yeah. I mean, I understand that was one of the options. But if he had at that front door where the sidewalk is, where I used to walk into Mr. McCamey's store.
On Randolph.
On Randolph Street, right there, at that location, that was a store. If there were a door there and that looks like maybe five-by-five space between the sidewalk and turning to go into that entrance that he has on this concept, if that became a foyer, is it possible that that could be a residential dwelling that way? Or no?
I'm not sure I'm understanding completely how far back.
Like two entrance doors and then that middle space is a foyer.
Is there any residential space in that front, one foot or two feet? So you're just talking about lobby space in the middle, but the two residences are still coming all the way to the street?
Okay, right there at the front door where he has somebody going into that one apartment right there. There's a little porch there at the entrance. If that porch became a foyer with a door to open into the foyer and then into the apartment through another door, does that fly with something that he can do there?
I will try to answer that by reading the standard again from the code, which again is for additional standards in the C1 zoning district.
Arnie, if you could pull your mask and lean in so we can hear you loud and proud.
So is this, these are the standards for the C1 zoning districts for dwellings. Dwelling shall be allowed by right on the second floor, any higher floor. B, dwelling units occupying the first floor of any structure shall only be allowed with a conditional use permit. And there are two standards that follow. First floor residential units should not be visible from a public street. So I'm not quite sure in your example with the lobby space, are we still being able to see in the two, the two sets of windows left and right, are those residential spaces or not? Where's the residential space further back?
The windows on both sides would still be residential.
Okay.
So it would not, the door would not make a difference?
Not the way I read, number one.
Okay.
And then just to finish out, I'll go ahead and read the second standard. If the building fronts on a public street, the residential portion of the first floor shall be required to. shall be required to be shielded by office, retail, or a lobby that maintains a commercial appearance. My interpretation of that, that the residential space can't be all the way to the front of the building, it's gonna have to be behind of something. And you have latitude in determining what behind means. If it's 10 feet, if it's more, that's, you know, up for you to determine. If you would want to make a condition, let's say, for approval, and that there has to be a lobby space or a commercial space, a minimum of 10, at least 10 feet in depth before the residential spaces can start, just as an example for a condition.
Yeah. And looking at that option, I would caution council, you know, a certain percentage, I would direct staff to go back and work with the applicant to find out what the building will allow and what would make sense for, working with the architect, to figure that out.
And just to throw out, the lobby was, I think, was in response to the lyric when that came up, was, this all became an issue with the lyric was, do you allow residential on the first floor? And it was, no. Well, you can have a lobby to maintain that commercial appearance from the outside, and then they allowed it. So this discussion, you know, went on with these big buildings in Lexington where they were told, no, you can't have residential right on the front. So again, I just caution that we don't set a precedent. I have no problem rezoning this and asking Arnie to do all that other work to make it work, but then RLC has requirements, too. You can't skirt all the requirements just to get what you want.
And this building has residential that faces both Henry and Randolph. Is that correct? Or it would, as proposed?
My understanding is, and you see the footprint on page, whatever it is, in the appendix, but yes, the entire second floor now is occupied by residential space. And the proposal for the entire first floor would be residential space. Yes, you would have residential space facing Henry and North Randolph, even though I believe there isn't a door, front entrance from Henry.
And yes, it does have residential across the street on Henry Street. As a reminder, because, so we...
I just want to comment to piggyback what Frank said about the commercial space on the front. The Walker Entrepreneur Program has so many entrepreneurs out here who may need space. And the amount of rent that you charge would be something that's very affordable. I would suggest possibly reaching out to some of the staff of the Walker program to see if there's some potential there, so that you can have commercial in the front and residence in the back. Just throwing it out there.
Ms. Smith.
I was, either on planning or maybe just starting the council, when we approved first-floor residential for north-facing lawyers row, those three apartments on the first floor. Part of the justification for that was, and this goes back a ways, so bear with me. It was shortly after our financial situation back after 2008, and the owner had invested quite a bit of time and money in that property and tried to rent it commercial, and demonstrated very effectively how much effort they had gone through to rent those spaces out and still striking out as a result of the situation we were in, not unlike what we're dealing with now. And the intent was, yes, I want to put residential in there part-time, just so I can keep some cash flowing. And once things turn around, that will go back to commercial space. And I think we actually did have a time limit on that, on that permit. It was not in perpetuity. So I'm just explaining where I'm at on how that, how I supported that application. I think at this point, to Leslie's point, we have a square peg and a round hole. It's not quite the right fit. I think there's a way to either change the peg or change the hole, but either through rezoning or modifying the application, so we can meet where we need to meet. And I don't think we're quite there yet.
Arnie, do you have a recommendation for how we move forward after what you've heard?
Well, I'll perhaps spare you. I would suggest the council thoughtfully direct staff to work with the applicant to work towards a compromise with having commercial or lobby space in the Randolph Street facing portion, the entrance of the building, to be commercial or lobby space, whatever ends up looking and being most appropriate, and come back to council with their combined efforts. I think that makes the most sense to comply with the commercial zoning. We don't get to decide which buildings get to be commercial and which areas. Again, our zoning has identified that area as being commercial. If this council wants to change the zoning, we've got a process for that. You know, arguably, yeah, well, we've got a process for that, and that would be the change. But as received, I don't think, I think in very good faith, the Cosmos family is trying to do the right thing for them, and it complements what this council is trying to do with our comprehensive plan and for the city. And that working collaboratively to make this work to our standards and not eliminate the first floor, but modify it until there's less space, that you've got the commercial on the front end. So if you would want to direct staff to work with the applicant, otherwise, you can move forward with a consideration to vote up or down on the existing request.
I would like to make a motion to have staff work with applicant to see what can be worked out.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one question. So are we continuing the public hearing? Is that how this works?
Well, the public hearing has been opened and closed. We would advertise for another public hearing, and I think we would be able to most expeditiously hear that on the 7th of April. Yes, Arnie?
I can make just a slight clarification to that. If you defer, postpone, whichever word you want to use, to a date certain, then I do not have to advertise.
Okay.
So that would be preferable, so the advertisement would not have to occur again.
And that could be, trying to remember, what date is the 17th? So we could defer it to the March 3 meeting, or?
March 3.
If that would be...
I move to amend my, I'd like to amend my motion to direct staff to work with the applicant and have the report back for the March 3 meeting on the results of that.
For consideration.
Consideration.
And I'll second the amendment.
And I'm gonna suspend Robert Schules. Instead of having a vote on the vote, ask for discussion, and then we'll take a motion on the amended.
Is it appropriate, if the applicant wanted to respond to any of the discussion, to offer any comments right now before we do something and just assume that they're gonna go off and come back to us on March 3, since we're all here?
If it would please the applicant, if you have any responses?
If he wants to, maybe not. It's up to you. I just didn't want to...
If you do, please tap the microphone there to turn it on. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I will make my best faith efforts to work with the city and meet all of the goals that will help us to allow, to invest in downtown and to get a good outcome for everybody, for the neighborhood, for my neighbors, for us as property owners, for the people that are coming to live here. I hope that staff and council will recognize the effort and expense that we're going through to get to where we are today, much less down the road, so that we don't, I would like to say, the CUP process is the code of the city that allows zoning, rezoning is one, and the CUP is another. This is literally the process that the city guided me to and through to see if this use is permissible. And if I understand Arnie correctly, you members have the discretion to allow me to do it with parking, without parking, with a lobby, without a lobby. You have the discretion to approve it as staff recommended approval originally and as I've requested it. That is what the nature of the CUP process is. So I would like to say it's not out of bounds to say, we can approve this as a city council. That's perfectly within your discretion, as I understand it. You can ask the attorney and the experts. But I do think it's reasonable to ask council to recognize that you're making it difficult, you're making it onerous possibly. Think about who might use a space that wants to be next to a residential space or a temporary, you know, the type of use, residential use I've proposed. Think about the tenants and whether they might want to have someone in the front 10, 15, whatever staff and I come to as the next proposal for March 3. I'm happy to do this, to go through this discussion, but I would like to leave open on March 3 for staff or the council to say, okay, we've, you've investigated this thoroughly now for another two weeks, you spent your time and money doing this, and maybe your original proposal was best. And that is within our purview as council to approve this use in this particular location through this mechanism in the city code of the CUP. I would just like to say that I think that is what we're here for. That's why I'm standing here today. This is a mechanism. Rezoning is another mechanism that has other implications. So I don't think granting the use as we've requested it through a CUP is somehow out of bounds. It, in fact, is precisely what a conditional use permit is for. We'll let you do this outside of the boilerplate of the code with these conditions. So that's all I'd like to say.
I would submit, thank you. And thank you for being here and advocating for your property and your family. I would, I anticipate, when you meet with staff, the focal point, those conditions related to a conditional use permit with a lobby or commercial in the front, that we don't really have discretion over as part of the, we always have ultimate authority to do whatever, take that back, council has the ultimate authority to do whatever they darn well please, given the opportunities and power to them by the state legislature.
Right. So then, please clarify for me, Mayor. If council, if four members of the seven-member council say, I think this is an appropriate use of this space as the original application was submitted and as staff originally recommended approval, and three of four planning commission members recommend approval, if four of three council members vote to approve that, is that, are you telling me that would be somehow illegal or out of the purview or discretion of the council?
It would be contrary to our stated standards for the conditional use permit.
But is the process of the conditional use permit to allow council to do that? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Forgive me, my intention was to allow you to respond, and I apologize for responding to your response. The intention is not to have a debate this evening.
I understand. I just think...
Staff will be glad to guide you through the standards and advise council at our March 3 meeting when we carry this forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't want to belabor this, but I'm a little confused. Do you want us to go ahead and vote on this and give you a yes, yay, or nay at this point? Or would you rather? I mean, I'm open to either way. I'm just asking, because I got mixed messages there.
Just to be, I'm willing to go through the process and have the discussion and put more due diligence in with Arnie and staff and conversation with council members to find something that everybody feels like it's a win. I'm willing to spend that extra time, effort, and money. So I am happy to accept this deferment.
Thank you. I think it will be worth it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
We're voting on Mr. Alligood's motion, right?
The motion on the floor is to ask the applicant and staff to work towards a compromise to be brought back on the meeting for March 3.
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. The next public hearing is regarding a request from Margaret Hutton to allow a conditional use permit for Bed and Breakfast. Arnie?
Good evening again. We do have a property at 601 South Main Street requesting a conditional use permit. The property is owned by Penelope Farthing, and the applicant is Margaret Hutton, and the request is for a bed and breakfast in for five bedrooms. You may recall that not too terribly long ago, I believe it was in July of last year, there was a zoning amendment where we went from five-bedroom max up to eight. As long as you meet the use and design standards and all the use and design standards are included in here in your staff report, there is a ability to request uptake. I'll only give you that as a background. The request specifically from the Huttons is for bed and breakfast for up to five, and they have placed a condition on that where they would hold no more than six events. There's a good bit of detail in your staff report, including a photograph from the front, or the first page, showing the view from South Main Street, and scarcely see the house because of the vegetation. Also provided you a photograph on the next page from Sellers Avenue to show you the rear portion of the house, the driveway, and the carriage house that is also on the property, or at least immediately behind the main building. And you see the location map on the bottom of that page. Included the definition and all of the use and design standards. There was a bit of discussion at the planning commission level about landscape standards and a bit of a discussion about lighting, because there are some offensive security-type lights on the property that we have had a number of complaints about in the past. And the property owner that lives directly across made those comments at planning commission. Then he spoke with me this, just shortly before this meeting, and said he has a solution worked out with the contracted owner that intends to run the bed and breakfast, where they will remove those rather large security lights and put up something more appropriate. We do have a staff recommendation and a planning commission recommendation, because the planning commission met on the 27th of 2020, and they approved a motion unanimously with the six staff recommended conditions, and those are found on the bottom of page five of your packet. I will not read those into the record. We also have the minutes from the planning commission for your review, and there were not any additional comments or application submissions in this particular case. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Members of council, have any questions? Hearing done. If the applicant or representative would like to make any comments, if you could, please state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Margaret Hutton, and my address is 8264 Brown Trail Bend in Victor, Idaho. Just want to thank you all for having me this evening. I know this is a long meeting, and so I will just keep it short and say thank you to Arnie for walking us through this process, and thank you to Leslie for all the work that she has done to get us here tonight. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Thank you. We'll call you back up if members of council have any questions. Looking very studious, as a bunch.
You ready for a motion?
No, I'm gonna hold a public hearing, but I can understand your zeal. Mr. Ziegler?
I was just gonna ask, Arnie or the applicant, maybe Arnie, how many, remind me how many off-street parking spots will be necessary for the, you know, five bedrooms in the main house, but then, you know, the innkeepers, if you will, if they stay in the apartment?
On page 37 of your packet, there, the parking requirement is the amount that you need for permanent residents, which is in a residential dwelling, typically two spaces are required. So it would be two spaces plus one per bedroom that is to be let. So they are showing on this drawing on page 37 of your packet, five additional spaces, and they're drawn in along the driveway. So as you turn off of South Main into the driveway, there would be three on the right-hand side of that driveway, and then two further down on the left-hand side to make up those five parking spaces that are required. I will also say that in our off-street parking requirement, there's not a requirement that you're allowed to have them tandem. That driveway alone is so long that they could have easily met the parking requirement without providing those additional spaces left and right of the driveway, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to add those so that the tenants can come and go as they please without having to ask somebody else to move.
And then, for a bed and breakfast, that's, again, kind of a...
And then for a Bed and Breakfast that's, again, kind of a commercial operation, what kind of trash pickup? Because currently the residence puts their trash in Sellers Avenue because they have two driveways into that property, and, you know, it's once a week. And I just didn't know if it, kind of running a Bed and Breakfast where you're required to serve breakfast to your... Because the other Bed and Breakfasts in town have a more, have a little bit more... I just, I'm just asking.
I do not have a good answer to that. That would maybe be a question for a public works director. I believe the applicant has the choice of still using carts. I'm not sure how many carts you can obtain and then pay for extra, or they have the ability to get a commercial service that provides service or pickup more often.
Again, just asking, just, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Alligood?
There was a, I attended the planning commission meeting where this was discussed, and there was a question during that discussion about where the owners would reside. There was a separate structure there that wasn't attached to, and it was in a different tax parcel. And how did that all get resolved?
Because this is the legislative act, you have a bit of discretion. But as you see on the bottom of page two of your staff report, the outline of the property, you see the main building is the majority of that property, but there is a property line that divides that property with the guest house or carriage house. I believe the owner or the applicant stated in their application that they intended to reside in the guest house and operate the five-bedroom B&amp;B in the main building. The prob, no, I'm not going to say problem. The potential issue there is if we go over to the next page and read the definition of a Bed and Breakfast, it says, "A dwelling unit occupied by the owner that provides up to eight." So this dwelling unit is technically not occupied by the owner. My interpretation is that the intent of having that part of the definition in our code is so that we have somebody on the premises or pretty darn close to the premises to take care of any issues, so we don't have the innkeeper living 10 blocks away or a mile away, because then they wouldn't be responsive to any issues that are going on with the property. In my interpretation, it would be okay to have the operator of the Bed and Breakfast living in the guest house that's a mere 20 or 30 feet from the main building, but that's up to you.
And shares the same address.
Correct. And this is the same address for both of these.
And that same type arrangement, didn't that occur on the Jackson Street property? There were two structures?
It is Bed and Breakfast on Jackson.
Bed and Breakfast don't exist on Jackson Avenue.
Right. You can't do Bed and Breakfast on that.
Correct.
They were doing short-term rentals maybe.
Correct.
Yeah. Good.
We do need to revisit the definition for another reason in, for the second sentence, because now that we've gone to eight, the second one doesn't make as much sense. Well, when we revisit that, we could potentially revisit the first part of the sentence that says dwelling occupied by the owner to see if we can have a little bit more flexibility develop a dwelling occupied by the owner on the property or something that may provide a little bit more flexibility.
Right. And I like the mayor's suggestion, too, the same address.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant or staff? If not, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? Yes, sir. Step right up. If you could, state your name and address for the record.
Charles Winder. I live at 3 Sellers Avenue, which is directly across the street from 601 South Main. I'm here actually to voice my support for granting the CUP, since I think it's going to be a net positive to the neighborhood for a couple of reasons. In the six years I've lived across the street, I've never met the current owner of that house, actually. And the reason is they don't live here. As far as I know, they never even occupied the house. You probably know that the house has been on the market since before I moved there. It's been sporadically occupied by tenants, but mostly dark, at least the big house. The carriage house has been occupied by a tenant. So I think that based on the location, the size of the house, the historic interest, the size of the kitchen in there, the price of the house, I feel like a Bed and Breakfast is probably the highest and best use for the structure, for the whole property. And I think that more important than that limitation, I think it's important that the owner lives at the house or on the property, because that's going to be a major positive development from what it is now. If the owner lives in the house, they're more likely to do the maintenance, they're more likely to be engaged with the community, to contribute to the community. If somebody has the energy and the passion to restore that house and at the same time make the house pay for its own upkeep and stuff, more power to you. I think that's a great, a great thing. So, and I did talk to Mrs. Hutton this afternoon, and we talked about the exterior lighting situation, that she made a good faith commitment to work with me and the other neighbors to take care of that problem finally. And she clearly understands that the neighborhood itself is the reason why people want to come to Lexington to stay at a B&amp;B, and it's the reason why you're coming to Lexington. So welcome to the neighborhood. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate you being here, and especially appreciate your attire, being in LDMS this evening. So thanks for representing, and yes, a nice welcome to the neighborhood. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Ms. Harvey Holseth?
You already know my name.
Of course.
Thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Mary Harvey Holseth, 7 Wallace, also a neighbor for two more months. And I've spoken to other neighbors up and down Wallace, and we're very excited that the yard will be cleaned up, that the sidewalks will be taken care of, that it will look again like the Mackey House. I'm also president of Rockridge Historical Society, and any historic properties in this town that people take care of, we love. So we think it's a great use of the property, and I'm not speaking for everybody because they're not here, but for us, for my husband and I, we're happy that they're coming. We have sold our house, speaking to the other public hearing that I didn't speak at. We sold our house in 24 hours for a heck of a lot more than we ever thought we would get for it. There's a shortage of housing in this city. So we're just glad that this property will be lived in, will have people in and out, will have the place cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your kind words and your contributions to the community. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Hearing none, I would like to close the public hearing at 9:18 and ask for council's consideration.
Are we having discussion first?
If that's your pleasure.
Well, I'm just curious if we should tighten up the conditions such that addresses exactly what you all pointed out so that our housekeeping is complete?
Certainly. Yes, do you have a recommendation?
Such that the main house has five dwelling or rooms, whatever the terminology is for the B&amp;B, and the caretaker operators will be living in the carriage house on the property behind the main house, to that effect.
That is in staff's recommendation, if I'm not mistaken, so...
I was just looking at the conditions and I...
So add a seventh condition saying that the owner may live in the carriage house?
That'll do.
Is that okay with staff? Do you want to comment?
Sure. If the intent is just to clarify what's in the definition and the fact that we're on two different properties, if you're simply trying to clarify that and specifically make the allowance that they can live in the carriage house while operating the Bed and Breakfast, yeah, I think it is worthwhile to add that if you like. Thank you.
And the same address. Needs to stay together with the same address.
I think that may be, when we look at the policy in the future, that that would be allowed, but for this condition, that carriage house is acceptable.
In regard to the address?
Pull that down.
You might want to check with emergency department because of 911 address. In the event of a fire, they would not know which building to go to. So have some kind of differentiation.
I presume that the applicant is agreeable before I make a motion to approve. Is that satisfactory?
Can I say, Margaret, this is about the...
Yeah. Margaret, if you could, yes, thank you.
I met with Celia Rainey yesterday, the city arborist, and there are some trees that are going to have to be taken out. And I'm meeting with Arthur Bartonstein tomorrow morning to do an architectural, landscape architect plan. So that, those parking spaces may change a little bit from what is on the actual plan, but we will have all of the spaces there, and it will not be a parking lot in the front yard. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
So in light of that, I'd like to move for approval of conditional use permit 2022-02.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Do we need to include the staff recommended conditions, or is that just assumed? That's okay?
My understanding is it's with the six staff recommended conditions and the extra one that we just added.
Yeah. For clarification, the motion is for approval with the seven conditions and a second, and we'll go for the roll call, or any further discussion. If not, roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and welcome to the neighborhood. Good luck with Arthur tomorrow. You're in good hands. Next item on the agenda is consideration of minutes in the February 3rd work session and regular meeting. Did I miss something? Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jennifer. Have another public hearing. Invite staff to come up and present.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for having me here tonight. And to take a page out of your book, Mayor Friedman, I'd like to recognize our registrar and two members of the electoral board who came out to tonight's meeting in case any of you or the public have any questions about the appropriation we're requesting for their So tonight I am here to request several appropriations based on the second quarter financials for FY '22. And before I begin, I just wanted to briefly list a few unbudgeted costs that we've had so far in FY '22 that we believe will be able to just absorb in the regular budget. I don't think we'll have to come back and ask for an appropriation. And those items are the compensation study for staff, the various staffing changes we've had within the finance department, the salary increases that we've given to the police department, and also the temporary additional wages we've given to the sanitation crew for their extra work. So to begin, in the general fund, $2,387,911 of Phase 1 American Rescue Plan Act funds are recognized as revenue replacement as allowed under ARPA provisions. This balance is requested to be appropriated to the capital projects fund with $2 million specifically earmarked for bridge repairs. And this was discussed, just as a reminder, at the last city council meeting. Next on the list, we're requesting $4,500 be appropriated to the city arborist state grant purchases line. She has successfully been awarded a grant in that amount from the Department of Forestry for urban tree canopy assessment. Also in the general fund, we're requesting $33,402 be appropriated to general government administration, and this will be to cover the additional expenses related to employee relations, costs associated with noticing each affected voter of changes in districting and polling places associated with recent redistricting approved by the Virginia Supreme Court, and for onsite training for city staff on the city's enterprise resource planning Earlier in this fiscal year, city council did approve for Public Works to carry over $542,042 of state street maintenance funds. To date, only $209,701 have been appropriated. So tonight we're requesting the remaining $332,340 be appropriated to paving repairs and maintenance, professional services for traffic control, and then traffic control repairs and maintenance. Also earlier in this fiscal year, council approved a carryover of $9,887 in farmers' market funds. Tonight I'm requesting the corresponding appropriation to their expense line. That's all for the general fund. Moving on to the equipment replacement fund.
Jennifer, if I can stop you just a second.
Sure.
The $150,000 traffic control repairs and maintenance.
Yes.
What exactly is that?
So Public Works is working to get the signals lined up along Nelson.
Nelson.
Yes. And so it'll be the planning.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. In the equipment replacement fund, in FY '21, the general fund made full payment to the equipment replacement fund of the budgeted amount of just over $400,000. However, during the last fiscal year, it was decided that some of the equipment would actually be purchased in FY '22 as opposed to '21. So tonight we're requesting appropriations in the amount of $267,065 to purchase that equipment that was delayed FY '22. And that includes a compressed air filler for the fire department, sewer jet nozzles for Public Works, a tractor, a truck box, and also a dump truck for Public Works. Lastly, on the capital projects fund, just to reiterate, the appropriation coming from the general fund, we'd like to have $2 million of that specifically appropriated to the bridge repairs and maintenance expense line. Any questions?
Members of council, have any questions on those details? No, ma'am? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for consideration of ordinance 2022-02. And is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue this evening? Hearing and seeing no one, 9:28, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2022-02 incorporating the budget amendment for the second quarter of FY '22.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sure is expensive replacing equipment and bridges. Roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Jen, thank you, and electoral board, thank you for your service. And Jackie, welcome. Glad you're here. And you all are welcome to stay for the remainder of our meeting, but if you'd like to escape, you may do so. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes from work session and regular meeting, and unless there are any modifications, I would ask that those be approved as presented. Very good. Citizens' remarks and comments. We always welcome comments from our friends and neighbors. And is there anyone who would like to address council this evening? Seeing no one, I'll move straight into the boards and commissions and ask for Mr. Smith's report on the Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
A note of good news, the rain tarp is in place, so the rain that we get this evening will not be draining directly off into Leachate Basin and save us some money going down the road as a result of that. We're in budget season. We should expect a landfill budget proposal probably in April. We should expect, um, a landfill budget proposal probably in, in April along with the capital improvements project. And, uh, I'll keep you apprised of, of how that develops. No other news at this time. Any questions?
Don't want to talk about fluffing in cell two?
We already heard about that.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strawn?
Main Street Lexington met on Tuesday, February eighth, and I think I've mentioned it before, but Main Street and the city are working with WNL engineering students on a mid-block crosswalk downtown at Baxter's Alley. The design committee is reimagining the green space at Courthouse Square to make it more usable. WNL is in favor of this and they're willing to partner with Main Street on the project. As a result of the downtown survey, we have identified that there are very few vacant spaces downtown in either the ground floors or upper stories. The Economic Vitality Committee is exploring putting maps on buildings at key intersections downtown to encourage foot traffic on side streets. And it may actually be a QR code linked to a map and other information so that it can be updated easily. So we're in the very beginning stages today. We actually took a walk around downtown as a committee to explore that possibility. And the Main Street staff is working with the new owner of the Lexington Building Supply property on a DHCD Industrial Revitalization Fund feasibility study grant, maybe the longest name of a, a grant. And the city, I believe, is actually submitting that application. So it'll be interesting to see what, what opportunities are for the, are there for that property. And Restaurant Week, it started yesterday and it runs through February twenty-second. You can also get your picture with the love Lexington or the love letters in Hopkins Green before the twenty-second. Share your photos and tell us what you love best about Lexington by using hashtag love VA and hashtag Lex love letters in your posts. And a big thank you to Celia Rainey and Jeff Hughes for pruning the hydrangea trees downtown so that they will be gorgeous come spring. And that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Just to, probably just point out, the courthouse square is, is owned, continues to be owned by the city.
Mm-hmm.
With neighbors of Washington and Lee in the old courthouse building and Hessen Co. building, uh, adjacent neighbors.
Right.
The, the fluffing and buffing of that, uh, space that Main Street Lexington is looking at would be in collaboration with the neighbors.
That's exactly right. I did not mean to imply WNL owned it. We own it.
Right.
They're willing to help fund it and are interested in what we're doing there.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Strawn? Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission met on Thursday, February tenth, and we reviewed the bike and pedestrian plan at its sixty percent completion phase. The meeting was by Zoom, which worked out well because we had, we had about twenty to thirty participants. And then on Thursday, February twenty-fourth at five PM, our usual meeting time, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the Washington and Lee master plan right here in the Lilburn Downing Middle School cafeteria. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Hearing, uh, Mr. Eiers, Regional Tourism?
Thank you. Uh, Tourism met yesterday and it was a busy, uh, session, so I'm just going to cover a few things because the night is late. Um, we re-elected Shayna Layman as chair and Brooke Sheehan as our new vice chair and for this coming year. Uh, we also voted to move forward with renewing the three-year lease on the Lexington Visitor Center. After reviewing our options, we felt it was best to stay in the current location. So starting three-one twenty-twenty-two, our rent goes from forty-three fourteen a month to forty-seven thirty-two. That's a nine-point-seven increase with three percent increases in year two and three. That still would put us, uh, below the average for Lexington, which is about twelve dollars per square foot. And we would be at eleven-fifty per square foot. And the other feature of this three-year lease is that there will be a mutual sixty-day termination clause, so if a better opportunity presents itself, we won't be locked in. And it may be, uh, we, we just didn't feel like it, it made sense to make a move at this particular moment, but we may at some later point. And we may reach a, a place in time where having a traditional visitor center doesn't make the same sense it used to. So, uh, that, that may come down the line. Although anecdotally, at the visitor center at the Natural Bridge State Park has been extremely helpful in drawing traffic into downtown Lexington. Um, so that, that is a place where it works really well. Let's see, uh, markety, um, excuse me, uh, Lone Star Rodeo is looking for, um, volunteers next, uh, weekend. So if you want to be a ticket taker or a, uh, barrel clown, you can do that. So if you are interested, uh, please, uh, reach out to Jean Clark at the, at the visitor center and she'll put you in touch with the right people. And, um, also I wanted to mention that in the, uh, Senate Bill, uh, thirty, uh, Virginia Senate Bill includes an amendment to pay off the existing debt, which would allow the Natural Bridge State Park to begin using more of its revenue, uh, to improving the visitor experience instead of, uh, its debt, uh, service. So we're hopeful that will go through. And, um, also Director Jim Jones had, had forwarded some information to city council. I just wanted to mention that, uh, uh, according to a, a study he, he shared with us, sixteen dollars of economic impact is generated for every one dollar spent at, uh, state parks. And our state park is doing incredibly well compared to the other state parks. Uh, we rank eighth and all of the ones ahead of us have other features, for instance, uh, being, you know, at the beach or in a huge population center, which, uh, recommend them. So we are doing exceedingly well, so it'll be good to have, invest more money into Natural Bridge State Park. And I will leave you with that. And if anybody has any questions?
Any questions? I'm just concerned that you look at me when you talk about, uh, rodeo clowns, specifically clowns, but, uh, well, well-directed. And, uh, we'll, um, uh, reemphasize Natural Bridge State Park is a gem in our community and doing great things. So congratulations to Jim and his team and to all the community. Raro, Mr. Ziegler?
Uh, very briefly, uh, registration ends tomorrow for softball and baseball. I have a nine-year-old. I have to register for softball tomorrow. I waited till the last minute, but we will take late registrations, of course. But just do it on time because I know you all have kids to, you want to register, right? That's my report.
Threshold, Ms. Alexander?
No report.
Mr. Alligood, Maury Service Authority?
The Maury Service Authority is in the process, is in the process of updating its articles of incorporation. And, uh, suggestions have been made by the county, uh, and by the city at this time. And partly today, there were a couple of members that met to discuss those recommendations. And so, uh, we're going to, the MSA is going to present its recommendation. So it's, it's going to be a negotiation process, I suspect. And, uh, we met, uh, today, uh, the regular meeting, by the way, is going to be on February twenty-second at the County Administration Building of the MSA. But, uh, in meeting today, it was, the focus of the meeting today was, uh, on the articles of incorporation and, uh, what items should be included in it. And, uh, uh, there was discussion again about the extreme levels of money that are going to be involved in the modernization, uh, a good bit of discussion in the modernization of the project, of, of the, uh, water treatment plant and in the raw water plant as well. And so there, we're, there's no firm result of today. It's a, it's a process and I'll inform you when, when we've settled on what the conditions are going to be for the, uh, articles of incorporation. Apparently the process is, just, just so you'll know, uh, to change the articles of incorporation, uh, they first have to be agreed upon by the MSA board and then they're going to be submitted to the State General Assembly for approval. Apparently it has to go that route for getting articles of incorporation, uh, changed for the MSA. So there you go. That's the end of report.
Thank you, sir. For my report, uh, I bring forward, uh, the application from Ash Mullis to serve on threshold. And, um, this is, uh, will be, uh, participating or filling a vacancy. Uh, there's a three-year term and is scheduled to, uh, terminate June thirty of twenty-twenty-four. And I would ask for council's consideration.
Move to approve Ash Mullis for a term ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-four to threshold board.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Eiers?
Aye.
Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I had a great conversation with her this afternoon and she is currently working for Project Horizon as she indicated in her application and is enthusiastically, uh, uh, looking forward to, to joining threshold and making a contribution. So good to get, um, a local, uh, young lady, um, with roots here in the community, serving on, uh, one of our committees. Additionally, just want to, um, uplift, um, Holly Rogers at Tourism for getting the love letters here. For those that you attended, it was, uh, fun to celebrate the love letters and see them. And it's been fun to watch people take pictures and post them and, um, share the love. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. March, as it's, uh, developing, is going to be a month of work sessions. You've seen on the, uh, item that's up to come about the, um, uh, procedure for, uh, reviewing the spot foot proposals, the sites, uh, the, two, the site there and the two developers is that it's proposed we have a work session on March second and March sixteenth to discover, discuss that topic, have the, uh, developers in and, uh, have questions from the public presented to the council that then can be addressed to the developers. I'll go into that in more detail there, of course. March third, we're looking at, uh, presentation from Arnie Glazer that would inform council about procedurally how the master plan for WNL and the institutional overlay, zoning overlay would be approved, would be reviewed and approved by council, should that be the case. March seventeenth, we have scheduled a work session to hear about the compensation plan that is almost completed at this point in time so that you understand what that plan consists of. And of course, that will be used later on to, by staff, put together recommendations for compensation that would be included in a proposed budget. So the others, um, work session that is being proposed is on March tenth. The director of the MSA would like to have the MSA come in and, uh, present to city council the ongoing issues, plans, et cetera, that they are proposing as they deal with and approach the, uh, water treatment plant improvements. And, um, have you, uh, directed any questions to them that, uh, to the director and I believe his assistant, the engineer there, that you may have, so that you have a very clear understanding of what, um, they are proposing and some of the details that Mr. Alligood maybe hasn't been able to touch on in just his reports or that I as staff, um, and Jeff Martone are not aware of. So it's a big schedule. You will be able to, uh, deal with that March second and sixteenth recommendation shortly. But the MSA director would like at this time, uh, your approval to have that, uh, March tenth work session. That is on a Thursday night. There will also be a presentation to the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors and their public service authority on or about that date. They want to go in tandem, so we're all hearing the same thing. That's a Thursday night, of course. Um, typically our Thursday nights are pretty well tied up with meetings. We're all aware of that. So I would propose, if, if you would please, if you're a, uh, would, is to go ahead with that March tenth meeting night. Uh, they, they, they noted March ninth as well, but I think, uh, there's a, a problem with that night already, so.
What time?
That's up to you. That's up to you completely. Uh, if you want to have an early meeting at five-thirty or six, they're fine with that. Or if you want to do seven or seven-thirty, they're fine.
I'll just tell you that we, we have Planning Commission and that we, most likely we will carry over the WNL master plan discussion to that day.
To which day? March tenth?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we're, we're busy. I mean, I, I was very well aware of that.
No, and that's fine. I don't mind doing on the same day. I'm just saying, if, if you want to hear that discussion, avoid five to seven. We, we have decided for our first meeting, and I'm sure we'll carry it over, to try to limit our meeting time so that we don't all get fatigued and carry it over if we need any additional time, but.
And to that point, you're right. You could have the, we could have the seven-fifteen, uh, work session and, uh...
There's nothing magical about Thursday, the tenth.
No.
Could be Wednesday, the ninth, for instance.
I'm jammed up on ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the tenth. I think after...
Go ahead and pop your mic there, test it.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely be in favor for Thursday, the tenth, at seven-fifteen, if that works for others.
We, where? Here?
Correct.
And the Planning Commission meeting at five would be here, uh, similarly.
We can bring you a snack. So we want to tentatively plan on seven o'clock, Thursday, the tenth?
Well, sure, seven o'clock.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen? Seven, 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 seven fifteen, fifteen, five, five?
Seven to fifteen, we'll give the Planning Commission time to depart so they don't get caught here and have to stay.
Give, give them a reason to leave.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Um, you heard earlier that the parking lot at Henry Street and Randolph Street the city has used for many years for public parking is being sold, so that lot will no longer be available to us. And the public parking that is there will cease as of April first. Uh, staff will remove the signs, of course, prior to that. Also notify those individuals who are currently parking there that they, uh, can no longer do so. Uh, if there's any, uh, refunds coming for terms that they've released, leased that space for, they would be reimbursed, of course. And the Georges is buying that property. Uh, just from a public works perspective, some things going on as the Providence Hill Sewer Repair Relining work is, is ongoing for several months. To date, repairs consisting of valve and manhole, uh, repairs and rebuilds have been completed. There will be some point repairs and replacement of areas of main that were not conducive to relining, and that will, uh, be ongoing this month. And next month, March, the actual relining itself will begin and they will be completed in June. On Diamond Hill, of course, we still have construction ongoing for the water and sewer project there. And the project is about thirty-two percent complete as of this date. The water mains are going much faster than the sewer and they're about sixty-five percent complete. Uh, the sewer itself is about thirty percent complete. The focus of the water main work will still be on Washington Street for the next couple of weeks, so you should still stay away. The actual main itself will probably be in the ground and completed within the next few days. But then for several weeks, they'll be hooking these services up to the new main after it's tested. They pressure test it and bacteria test it. So, uh, you know, when you hook up the water to your house, it's good water. But that will take several weeks as well. After that, for sewer work, we're going to focus on the, the contractor's going to focus on Massey and Maury Streets for the sewer. And so those will be ongoing projects and they'll be in mess for several weeks. And the project, as it comes into completion, will probably, uh, be done about the fall, October perhaps of, of this coming year, of, of this current year, I should say. So if it's done in plenty of time, we'll also repave at that point as well. Kids place improvements are ongoing and they've been handled by Public Works. Uh, areas that they're working on include, uh, some decking replacement, some isolated structural repairs, and a lot of replacement of tires, chains, swings, et cetera. And the project will be completed within the next two weeks. Uh, you recall last meeting, there was comments made by Ms. Anne Rusick about the mounted unit. And between, uh, the chief of police, the, her board and myself, there's been a response provided to Ms. Rusick that, uh, enumerates how we have been handling each and every one of the concerns she brought forth. Most of them, of course, were previously dealt with and she was just uninformed of how thoroughly the, uh, unit and, uh, the, the board and the chief have gone over that, uh, those pieces of information. So hopefully that satisfied her, uh, concerns. The compensation study, as I already noted, is just about finished. There will be a work session on March seventeenth where you can hear about the compensation study and ask questions to the Berkeley group who have presented it and done the work. And again, that information will be used for, uh, budget recommendations. There is no council approval of that report. It's just an observation or an opportunity for you to, um, hear everything about that study so that you're comfortable with it. In the fire department, it's been, I won't say a slow week, but they've had, um, some, some fewer, uh, items than usual. And of course, they did participate in that, uh, tragic fire and homicide over in Buna Vista and support the Buna Vista Department in that regard. They also assisted Rockbridge County with a couple of smaller fires and an overturned tractor trailer in I-81 this past week. And the police department... And the police department, Chief Green chaired her first meeting of the Virginia Alcohol Safety Awareness Program regionally, and so, congratulations to her for taking on that chairmanship duty that we all sometimes participate in. And several of the officers participated in SWAT training, the Armorer's School, and the E-Magistrate Implementation Activities. And the department was represented at the funerals for the two Bridgewater College law enforcement officers recently killed. Attending were Lieutenant Frost, Detective Kesterson, and Officers Hartbarger and Stugdale. The speed monitoring trailer continues to be stationed throughout the city and has been on Miller Street near Center Street recently. The grocery tax revenue loss. Last meeting, I noted that the Virginia First Cities, a support advocacy group for cities across the Commonwealth, had supplied in a number of cities with the revenue losses they anticipate from the elimination of the grocery tax. And unfortunately, their estimates were very inaccurate. Nonetheless, it's good for us because what they had considered to be a $1.4 million loss would actually be about a $330,000 loss. We still don't want to lose those funds at any rate, but if that passes, and if by chance the state does not completely fill that hole that would be created with their general funds, that would be the upper end of our loss. Hopefully, the bills that are being considered now do replace the majority of that revenue, but not all of it at this time. We'll just have to see how that evolves, of course. And then, with the report from Nathan earlier, we heard about the technology needs in this room, and as an.
And electrical.
Yeah.
And electrical.
Apparently, electrical as well at this point in time. I bet that's a timer somewhere telling us it's time to leave. But nonetheless, I would want to come back to council at the next meeting with another alternative, and that's to look at use of the county boardroom that we used to occupy some time ago. Been in conversation with the county administrator for some time on how that could be accomplished, and I will explain that, present it to city council, and ask for your consideration at the March 3rd meeting. And that's my report. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those questions.
Clearly, a real professional who carries on despite the lights.
That's right.
Ms. Strong?
Sorry, going back to the beginning, are a couple of work sessions that we have scheduled on Wednesday, do we set the time for those?
No, that would be up to you tonight, as we move to that item. There's a scheduling that you see that.
Okay. Are we going to wait and talk about that later then in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yes.
Mr. Alligood?
Just a quick, the Providence Hill relining, the sewer relining, that's one of the areas where the I-N-I infiltration was a problem. Is that?
That is correct. That's why we chose that area, because there's significant I-N-I that goes into Woods Creek Interceptor, and that's one of the reasons we, you know, potentially would have to develop our suitcase, should say, delay the development of the VDOT site. If we had some.
I was just verifying.
Some high water usage there, that would be a problem at this point.
So, we should start seeing some reduction with this project ongoing in I-N-I numbers overall.
That's correct. We hope to see that in the months ahead.
Any other questions for the city manager? I would just piggyback, as the city attorney comes up, uplift Randy Hostet and his team. Dr. Hammond and some others had some difficulties getting patients to their buildings because of all the construction, but Corey Burksstress was very responsive and went and visited the businesses, and final analysis was a positive report. And it looks like part of the work is actually going to be an improvement for some of the businesses along that street as well. So, always like it when all, all works out well. Jared, welcome.
Thank you. Just a quick update on the VDOT property. The, we have apparently risen to the top of the stack at the Attorney General's office, and we now have Assistant Attorney General assigned to do the closing. He's emailed us a deed and a plat. He wanted some modifications to the plat, which we've submitted now to their office, and they've agreed that that's now suitable. The only remaining thing to be done is they want to do a separate document transfer of the underground storage tanks. Apparently, that's required by the DEQ to, or DCR, to make sure that the, basically, the chain of title is clear on where, who owns the underground storage tanks and when. So, he hasn't gotten the, that draft to me yet, but hopefully, within the next week or two, we'll be setting a date certain for that transaction to be concluded. And with that, I'll, happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Very good. Thank you, Jared. Next item, the new business, 15 dot 1. You received in your packet recommendation from Jim on a process for moving forward with the Spotswood decision. And again, as a reminder, the decision is who we choose to partner with moving forward on that project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very correct. We're not going to be going over the proposals in detail. That's not the purpose of any of these work sessions. But we will have the developers here on the March 2nd. If that work session is approved by you, they'll be here March 2nd, so that you can ask specific questions about those developers and their concepts, because the concepts themselves are something that we have an interest in, of course. I would also note that I think it would be opportune time for the public to direct any questions to you as council members, so that in that working environment, a conversation could be had, a discovery could be had with the developers. We would have, of course, public hearings, as we always do for a situation of this nature. However, sometimes, public hearings are just not conducive to that detailed conversation that we might want to have with the developer, and that the public would be best informed by, because you could get to the bottom of situations and find answers. Public hearings don't always provide the answers to some of those more complex issues and matters that need a little more conversation. So, I would, you know, encourage you as council members to, if you have friends and neighbors in the community have questions, solicit those questions, and the public should come forth and ask you those questions. If they were here on the night, in order to avoid, again, more inefficient use of times, I would suggest that they provide their questions in writing, and then city council can develop, or direct those questions to the developer. So, that's what I would ask or submit on March 2nd, should be a procedural way of handling those, that issue, to get the most out of that time with the developer. Of course, after that, we'd look at a second work session on March 16th, where staff would come in and present to you how we are going to analyze the two developers and the concepts that are being presented to us. So, you and the public would both know what we intend to look at as we move forward. And then, on April 7th, at a regular meeting, we would make a, they would have a public hearing and make a consideration, and consideration of that issue, and recommendation from staff and myself. So, that's what I'm proposing. If there was a need, that process can always be extended. But as I noted in my briefing, these proposals were put together months ago, and construction costs, as we all know, are rising. The ability to find labor is diminished, and the cost is going up, and finding professional services is difficult. So, I, you know, I would say we should not delay and have these proposals, they go dormant, or the developers withdraw because of those conditions. You know, we went through this a year ago. We heard much of the substance of concerns and questions from the community that existed. I'm sure some of it will come forward again. But you did, of course, deal with the issue of, are we going to sell the property or not? And decided, yes, it should be sold. And the RARA question was removed. And the issue of using it for a cemetery, obviously, is off the table, because we do, as you indicated last year at this time, propose to have it developed. So, there will be other comments, but those, hopefully, those comments are minimized. We'll still hear them, I'm sure. But so, what I'm asking for you tonight is, is this proposal okay? Do you accept these dates? And yes, is there a time on the 2nd and 16th that you would like to meet for those work sessions?
I'll just emphasize the circumstance that I asked Jim to put this together so that all of us, the entire community, the media, knows where we are in the process and a timetable, and how, giving people an opportunity to engage. I'm hopeful that our local media will make this, if it's adopted by council, will make this available to folks, so they can stay tuned in addition to the other ways that we've, or are communicating with folks. So, I think the, David.
Can I clarify on the March 2nd? The public cannot ask questions? Or can they ask questions? Are they supposed to ask us questions ahead of time based on a presentation that they didn't see? And we ask the questions for them, and they have to sit quietly? I'm just.
I would say for the, up to the city council, but for the appropriate, efficient use of your time, try and solicit questions. Again, these, these proposals have roughly been around for some time, and people are aware of it. And yes, direct the questions to you. A conversation with the developer at that point in time does not seem to be real conducive. Again, there'll be a public hearing for them to ask their questions directly, and they could submit questions in writing. I'm going to go to the media myself and try and elicit their support, as the mayor said, to make sure the public's informed. This is a working meeting.
Yeah, and that's all I was just clarifying, because it says it was, it was a presentation, but then not questions from the public at that presentation. So, they just have to listen and, and text us questions, and we can then ask them for them? Because they're, they might want to develop questions based on a presentation.
Absolutely. And that, again, and the reasons why we, in essence, will have the, the two work sessions for people to follow the bouncing ball and to respond. It's not an open forum. It's not the plan. It's a work session for council to, if you will, vet these two developers and their ideas to figure out who is best to partner with the city. We're fortunate, we have competition and two very quality developers. But typically, with a work session, we don't open it up to the, the general public. Sometimes, it can devolve into debate and what have you, but if there's time and not too many questions, much like our last work session, we'll invite members of the public.
I get it. That's why I just wanted to clarify, since the publication that is out there that we talked about, the media picking up, it says, "City Council and Questions from the Public." But, but, but it's, but it actually is questions from the public directed to city council that they should have given us ahead of time, based on the presentation that is that night. Correct.
Correct. And probably punctuation would have happened or helped there, because developer presents, developer presentation directed to city council, and questions from the public directed to city council. So, those are the two.
You can understand, just where I'm a little bit confused, though, the presentation is that night, but the public needs to be already submitted their questions to us in writing prior to the, to the presentation. That's all.
They can do it that way, but they can come to the meeting and also do written questions at that time.
Okay.
But again, to city council.
Just not supposed to be a debate between the public and the developer? We're just trying to keep a meeting forum, but they can ask questions at the meeting.
Right.
Right?
So, we'll have, we'll have a, a, a part of a work session, which typically, during work sessions, the public doesn't participate in work sessions, but we will have a part of the work session where they can ask questions.
In writing to city council.
So, they're going to slide me a piece of paper in writing that then I, I just, I'm sorry to kind of harp on this. I want to get it right. This is really important. When we last dealt with this, it was actually virtual, and then, yes, we got some presentations, and they were in the media a little bit, but I mean, we've been unplugged from this from a long time. It was virtual when everyone had the concerns about Spotswood, and we were dealing with selling it to RARA, and I just, you know, Mr. Gaskin hasn't been in Lexington a long ti, you know, in a while. If people come out that night and they have questions, will they get them answered?
Well, that's another issue. They can put them to city council in writing. So, we are clear of what the questions are, and then they can be directed to the developer as you see fit. You might be able to answer the question yourself as a council member. You know, it may be a kind of question that it requires you to answer it, as opposed to the developer, or maybe something you need to refer to the developer. So, that's why I believe it's more efficient that at that date and time, should they hear something or just have a general question, it would be directed to us as city council, as staff, we could bring those questions to you, in whatever format you, you know, can go around the table one at a time. Each council member can be directed to the mayor, and he can read them and, or whatever. And again, there's notice of this in the paper. We heard it in January. Are they completely informed, everybody out there? Of course not. But this is just one opportunity to have, bring forth questions in a working environment where they can probably be answered with some time put into them, as opposed to a public hearing where often you have one member for the public, after the other, after the other, making comments, and you just may not be able to get to the bottom of some of those concerns. That'll also be available to the public later, and to you as council, to have that public hearing, that particular format.
I think we need to ensure that the public has an opportunity to exchange with the developer or us or somebody as they have been accustomed to. Because if we wait till a public hearing, that's at the end of the process, and the first thing they're going to say is, there's no need for me to stand here and ask questions or tell you what my ideas are, because your mind's made up, and, you know, this is the end of the process. My, my, my questions haven't had an opportunity to be vetted.
To my knowledge, we've never had a hearing where we've required written questions. We've always allowed the public to stand there and say their piece, whatever that piece is. The idea of requiring a written question, I totally disagree with. That is a killer, in my opinion.
I understand what you're saying, but this is not a public hearing. It's a work session. Typically, at a work session, council does not allow questions or back and forth. It's for you to discuss issues. So, it is a hybrid. And I'm suggesting it's a way to embrace the public and get their comments at the beginning of the process, as Ms. Alexander's saying, instead of waiting solely till you get the public hearing in place, which is.
Compromise, I would be agreeable to questions being written and submitted, but not required. I still want people to be able to stand on their two feet and speak their piece.
So far, this has been a long process. And again, the ambition is to put some clarity on where we are and where we're going. The, the first step that we took this year was the cost benefit analysis and the proposals from the two developers, because whether they weren't here, and because of COVID, they were not here to join us. Our goal, our ambition with this that's spelled out, is choosing a developer, not the exact building, not the color, not the diagram, or any other site plan, but just which are we going to deal with? Who are we going to partner with for this project? And I would submit to you that if there are questions that members of the community have on which developer we should utilize, we, Jim's proposal is, we welcome them in advance when we sit down and hear their presentations. After their presentations, there will be a timeframe and another work session before council considers voting on who we're going to choose to work with. Also, there will be two city council meetings where those people can stand here and say, "I want to know," or "you better," or anywhere in between. So, it's not negating that, but our work sessions typically are focused on this group with who we invite in. We generally don't invite and have a big powwow with citizens and ourselves to just banter and have discussion within a work session that historically hasn't been particularly productive. We can do that, but I would suggest that I think this is a good format, offering people the opportunity. There are a lot of people that would love to give a written question to council to say, "Have you thought about," or "What about this idea?" That may or may not want to come and speak in person, and can utilize that method for our work session that we can discuss. So, there's no absolute, and there's no edict, and it's not eliminating the opportunity for people to come to our regular public meetings and make comments, or to provide input walking down the street, at a restaurant, or at the grocery store. So, I hope that provides some clarity and some comfort as to what the city manager is suggesting. It's just, if you will, an additional way for people, we typically don't suggest to people to submit their questions on a topic ahead of time. And that's this new method, or additional method, I should say. It's always been there. It's always been there, but usually people are kind enough to send you an email or come visit you, um, to lobby or, or ask their questions. Um, again, the hope is that between these two work sessions and the two, uh, we will also, as unfinished business, carry on the March 3rd and March 17th meetings, the, um, this topic of Spotswood with the ultimate, um, oper, or, um, expectation, if everything goes as planned with proper, uh, public input on April 7th, the developers, out of respect to them, we will make a decision and move on and allow them to, to pursue their, uh, ambitions as well. So.
Is there a possibility of, instead of Wednesdays, it could be Tuesdays?
Um, put it out there for.
One day before Wednesday?
It's up to council, whatever you think is the best dates for you, yourself. Um, I did.
My vote would be Tuesdays and not Wednesdays.
I, I, I floated these days with the developers, but I can certainly go back to them and say, "Those, those days don't work, and if they're interested, they'll be here."
So March 1st and March 15th would be your preference?
If Tuesday.
The Mondays, the, rather, the Tuesdays before.
Right.
And, uh, I think, looking at a 5 o'clock rendezvous for the benefit of staff, or 5:15, what? Uh, just a recommendation.
Does that work?
5:30? I mean.
5 o'clock, you're good.
Well, some people have transition and children obligations, so.
5:30?
I guess, yeah. Yeah, I'm the only, I mean, if, I, I don't want to be the only one. You guys start without me if I have.
Well, Mr. Alligood's the only one that wants to not meet on Wednesday, perhaps.
I'd say for more people, a 5 o'clock is good on a Tuesday. If I'm still at work, I'll get here when I can.
Say Tuesday, Tuesday at 5:30?
Well, it is, but it might not be for other people.
It's, it's more convenient for me if you need some support. All right.
All right, 5:30.
Dennis doesn't have to work, so, just kidding. So we'll modify it to, uh, March 1st and March 15th at 5:30.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And again, I'll just reemphasize for my own sanity, um, we will carry that unfinished business on the 3rd and 17th. Very good. We asked for review and consideration, so, um, I would ask for, um, your consideration to adopt this as our stated plan.
I move that we adopt this as our stated plan.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion?
Second.
Second, uh, got Dennis on the second, I think, in a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, 15 dot 2, appointment to city representative to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. I would ask for your consideration.
I move to appoint Mayor Frank Friedman as the Lexington representative to the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission for a term of three years. Okay.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. I'll do my best to represent you well. Um, we do have a closed session, and, um, before we, uh, ask Ms. Alexander to read us in, thank you all for enduring. Um, I hope your bladders are in good shape. And, um, uh, we will not be taking any action out of this closed session. Ms. Alexander.
I move that Lexington City Council will convene in closed meeting in accordance with Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711, subsection A, paragraph 3 of the Code of Virginia, a closed session for the purpose of discussing the disposition of real estate for a public purpose. I made the motion. Is there a second? Second? Thank you. Uh, we'll have roll call vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
My vote, aye. We're in closed session. Thank you. List today, 27.